Meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. This meeting is being broadcast live on Amherst Media. Many thanks to their volunteers for coming over here and putting this on every week. This is also being recorded, the audio tape, is being recorded by staff for the purposes of preparing the minutes. We'll go straight into the agenda. One item, Stephen Schreiber will be joining us, but he will be here probably not until 8:30 or so.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way of turning up the volume? I thought that the technical person here, spoken with her just a moment, some of us are hard of hearing, I'm afraid. Is there some way of being able to project the sound so that we in the audience can hear what you're saying?
We can't hear you.
Okay. Can Amherst Media turn up the volume for the speakers in this room, please?
Am I the only one who can't hear that?
No, we can't hear one second.
I'm sorry. We can't have public hearings if we cannot understand the proceedings.
Sir, we're gonna fix it. Thank you.
We're asking them to work on it, Louis.
I'm sorry?
We're asking them to work on it.
Okay, fine.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll just point out for my colleagues on the board that when the amplification is working, which it doesn't seem to be at the moment, it does make a big difference whether we speak directly into the mics or not, so try to make an effort to get the mic as close to your mouth as you can when you're speaking.
They couldn't see you.
Yeah, I know, but they don't have the amplification on.
We like to do a song off our first album now. Testing. Testing. Okay. Okay, so it can be recorded, it's being recorded now, but.
Right now, we're just going to review our minutes from our last meeting, so there's nothing for the public to comment on at this time, and there's nothing really to hear either. Does anyone on the board have any?
There we go.
Thank you. Let's start over. That's nice and loud. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the April 4th meeting of the Amherst Planning Board. We'll start tonight's meeting by a review of the minutes of March 21st. Does anyone on the board have comments or corrections for the minutes?
I make a motion that they be accepted.
Any further discussion on the minutes? Oh, in favor? Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of Sections 5 and 11 of Chapter 40A, this public hearing has been duly advertised, and notice thereof has been posted and mailed to the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and to Abutting Towns. This hearing is being held for the purpose of providing an opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding the proposed amendment to the Amherst zoning bylaw slash map. This amendment will be on the town meeting warrant for the annual town meeting. The first public hearing is with respect to A-04-12.
It's already about as loud as it can go without feeding back.
Yeah, I think it's good. Form-based Village Center rezoning, and this article is being introduced by the planning board. To amend the zoning by law to add a new Article 16, form-based zoning, to amend Articles 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 12, as well as Section 3.3, use classification and standards, otherwise known as the use chart, and Table 3, dimensional regulations, including amendments specific to the Atkins Corner Village Center, and to amend the official zoning map for Atkins We will begin tonight with a report from the zoning subcommittee on the status of this warrant article, and then I actually will have a comment from the town manager, who's joined us tonight, and at that point, we'll take comments and questions, first from board members, and then we will open it up to members of the public. Would someone from the zoning subcommittee like to take it away? Mr. O'Keefe?
Thank you. First of all, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Better. Thank you. Okay. First of all, as a housekeeping item, I want to point out that we have a new version of the documentation, which the board members here all have on our desks tonight, which is different than the one that we received in the packet. It's not different in any substantive way, but it has pages numbered correctly and is generally the official and final version of this. So we all have this on our desks. It's also at the back table there, so if you have several versions of this in your bag, like I do, make sure that you've got the most recent one that's dated April 2nd. One other point about this document is that it has a collection of maps in the back as the final three or four pages, and we'll be referring to those maps during our discussion All right, so, and the other housekeeping item I want to mention, it's not really housekeeping because it's important, but I want to begin by talking about the structure of this, just so that we understand the framework of our discussion about these two articles. One of the most important ways that this is different from what we considered last fall is that last fall, we had a single article that included both North Amherst and Atkins Corner, and we voted on those together. We got a lot of feedback from members of the board, members of the public, that they want a town meeting to have the opportunity to have an up or down vote on those two areas separately. So from the beginning of the process of developing this zoning, we've structured it as two separate articles, and so the public hearing that we have right now is on Atkins Corners. It's not about North Amherst, we're gonna get to that one next, but there are large elements of the form-based design regulations that are common to both of those areas, but in terms of the specific geographical extent of this, this first public hearing will be on Atkins Corners, and the second one will be North Amherst. All right, so what I would like to do is to just give the board an overview of the form-based regulations that we're proposing generally, how they would work in general, and to spend some time talking about how this proposal is different from the one that we brought to town meeting in the fall. Many of us have seen this before, but not all of us, so I want to make sure to go over the basic workings of the proposed zoning, but also to really specifically talk about the ways that it's different from what we did last time. So the heart of this zoning proposal for Atkins Corners is the creation of a new zoning district that would be applied in the area around the two new roundabouts that are being constructed in South Amherst next to Atkins Market. This would create a new zoning district called the Atkins Corners Zoning District, and it's abbreviated in all of our documentation as A.C. And the most important aspect of that new zoning district is that it would have a set of form-based design regulations attached to it, and those form-based design regulations govern, as the name states, the form of things that get built there. They don't cover the uses at all, but they cover what the buildings look like, how the sites are laid out, how buildings relate to each other, how buildings relate to the street, where parking can be located, general aspects of the appearance of buildings, but not specific details of the appearance, and things like that. This is something new for Amherst. We've never done a form-based code before, and this is a somewhat new zoning technique that many cities and towns in the Northeast and around the country have been starting to apply over the last 15 or 20 years, as they look for ways to better control the sorts of development they get, particularly in downtown and village center areas. So we've been, look, the zoning subcommittee and the planning board has been looking for several years at form-based code, going back to our master plan, which was adopted a couple of years ago, specifically calls upon the town and the planning board to investigate and implement form-based zoning regulations. So this is our attempt to do that. As I stated, we had an article last fall before town meeting that got about 60 percent of the vote in town meeting, which is a substantial majority, but it's obviously short of the two-thirds majority that you need to pass a zoning article. So we felt that it was a good proposal. Town meeting had a substantial amount of support for it, and we've been working on it since then, the zoning subcommittee has, and as members of the board know, we've had discussions at the planning board level as well several times as part of an effort to get your feedback and to make sure that your ideas and feedback are incorporated into the article. So I want to talk specifically about some of the ways that this is different than what we did last fall, and I'd like to start off by talking about the maps. And to start the discussion about the maps, I'd like to explain a little bit about how the maps are laid out in the back of the big, thick document that we all have in front of us. For both North Amherst and Atkins Corners, there is a series of three maps, and they're laid out in the same order. The first one for Atkins is called Atkins Corners Rezoning. The second one is called Atkins Corners Existing Zoning, and the third one is called Figure 1A, Atkins Corner Rezoning. So what these, the first, I'm gonna skip over the first one for the time being and concentrate on the second two, and the North Amherst ones are laid out similarly, but we're just looking at Atkins for now. The second two maps are basically showing you the zoning that's on the ground now, that's the first one, and what would be on the ground if this article were to be adopted. So basically, it's a before and after view of what's there now and how that would change. That should be fairly simple to understand, and you might not understand all the details, but the general layout of the, of what you're seeing on these maps is basically what's there now and what would be there in the future if this were adopted. Turning back to the first map, this is sort of a blow-by-blow of how we get from where we are now to where we would be if this were adopted. So basically, it's showing for every area that's changing, it's showing what's changing, what the old zone was and what the new zone was. So anywhere that you see a little arrow notation on that first map, it's a hyphen followed by a greater-than sign, that's showing you that the zoning is changing from one zoning designation to another. I know that it's a little bit difficult to understand that map, which is why we made a specific effort to get you the following two maps that show before and after, but this one is sort of the detailed playbook that shows you exactly what's changing on any specific parcel. So what has changed on the map since last time around is basically a reduction in the extent of the proposed Atkins Corner zoning district. I'm looking at the third map here, and the Atkins Corner zoning district is shown in blue. Last fall, we had a proposal that extended it quite a bit further south along the east side of Route 116 or West Street there, down to the place where, almost to the place where Country Corners Road intersects with Route 116. There were concerns about that portion of the new zoning district, and so we've scaled that back and pushed the boundary further north to reduce the potential impact there. In its place, that section on the east side of 116 is proposed to be zoned as RVC instead of NAVC, so that's a less intense use that we felt is better suited for areas immediately surrounding this Village Center zoning district. Also, a little bit further north, right in the vicinity of the roundabouts, there was an area, there's sort of a square-ish parcel there, that also had, and a triangular parcel that we were also looking at NAVC zoning, or Atkins Corner zoning last fall, and that's also been removed. Those parcels are considered unbuildable. And the other change to this map is more of a technical one, which is in the area around Applewood. There's an existing PURD, that's Planned Unit Residential Development Overlay District, on Applewood today, which is part of the Outlying Residence Zoning District. Under the proposed zoning here, the Applewood would be zoned as Atkins Corners, and that PURD designation is unnecessary because you can't do PURD development in the Atkins Corners zoning district, so that would be removed. So those are the changes to the map in Atkins. They're a little bit less substantial than the changes in North Amherst. I'll talk about those in more detail at the next public hearing, but those are the map-based changes. Apart from that, there's a fairly substantial set of changes to the regulations themselves, the use regulations and the conditions that are attached to them, compared to what we were proposing last fall. In particular, there's stricter limitations on multi-unit residential uses, townhouses and apartments. We put specific language in there to indicate that those uses are not intended to crowd out other uses, and they're also both regulated by special permit. They're not allowed by right, both townhouses and apartments. We made changes to the dimensional regulations, in particular, the lot coverage and the building coverage. We received some feedback that the figures that we used last fall were too high for those, and so we've reduced them to be equal to the figures in our existing Village Center Business Zoning District. We made changes to the design regulations, in particular, to emphasize handicapped accessibility. The regulations we had last time around required building entrances to be raised off the ground in a way that they didn't really need to be, and that hindered handicapped accessibility, so we've changed that. We've also substantially revised some of the language to place more of an emphasis on public transportation, because that was feedback that we got from the board. We revised the language in the, in Section 16.91, which is the alternative compliance section. We got quite a bit of feedback on that, and we really wanted, so 16.91 basically gives the permitting board the ability to waive some of the provisions of the design regulations, not the use regulations, but the design regulations, if a certain set of conditions are made. And we basically strengthened that by emphasizing what the board specifically needs to find if it's gonna grant any of those waivers. And so there's a set of four specific items listed on page 45 of the article under 16.91, and we emphasized the fact that any proposed waiver would have to meet all four of those conditions, being consistent with the master plan, being in accordance with the purposes of the form-based code, that it meets two or more of a set of community goals and objectives, and that it's in compliance with a fairly lengthy list of items that follow that. So we're really trying to emphasize that this is not something that would or could be granted lightly, but it's something that the board would need to have specific findings Another item that we received a fair amount of feedback on was the set of illustrations that illustrate the various building types that are allowed in the form-based districts. We, the first time around, we had a set of examples that showed the building types, but they weren't drawn from local examples in the area. So what we did was we combined those, we took the ones that were most relevant and appropriate from outside the area, and we combined them with a set of illustrations drawn from buildings around Amherst to try to illustrate the types of design that we're trying to encourage for each of the various building types. So I think I'm gonna stop the general explanation there and hand it over to the board. I'm sure you're gonna have questions, so we'll try to respond to your questions as they come up.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. At this time, we'll hear from our town manager.
Good evening, and thanks for giving me this opportunity to speak near the beginning of this public hearing. I do have another commitment that I do need to get to, so I really appreciate it. I'd like to offer some brief remarks, really more broadly speaking about the Village Center form-based zoning, rezoning proposals. I want to offer my enthusiastic support for this proposal, and I want to highlight four fundamental reasons that I think they are worthy of support at town meeting. First, I believe the Village Center rezoning proposal promotes sustainability. The rezoning is part of the community's effort to implement our master plan, increasing local sustainability in terms of reducing sprawl, locating new development near existing transportation utilities, employment, goods and services, decreasing energy use, increasing economic vitality, providing access to active farmland, and generally reducing environmental impacts. I also believe, while the process to this point certainly hasn't been perfect, no process is, I believe it's been a thorough process, and I believe it has resulted in a balanced proposal. The Village Center rezoning process has taken a full year with extensive community input and public participation and regular check-ins. The proposal, I believe, is a balanced representation of all of the communities' often competing interests. I also believe the zoning proposal is responsive to community input, and that's reflected in a number of changes that have been made to the proposal since it was first introduced at the fall town meeting. Based on town meeting's response to that proposal last November, and continued review and revision by the zoning subcommittee and now the planning board, I believe the proposed rezoning is substantially different in a number of ways. Mr. O'Keefe has explained in his opening remarks that the proposal will be presented as two articles. The proposal is divided into two articles, which allow town meeting to vote on changes in the Atkins Corners and North Amherst Village Center areas separately. The area of the rezoning that is affected by these proposals have been reduced. The areas proposed to be rezoned to a new mixed-use Village Center district or a form-based overlay district are significantly smaller in area than first proposed. The regulations have been adjusted. The regulations for potentially impactful uses, most notably multi-unit residential units uses, have been made more stringent. Improvements to design and dimensional regulations have been made in terms of public transit priority, building height, handicapped accessibility, street trees, another upcoming item at town meeting, hint, hint, and other issues. I also believe this proposal balances the community's land use approach. Amherst has responsibly protected its critical open lands for more than 50 years, but continuing to resist directing new growth and development into existing built centers will actually, I believe, encourage sprawl. I believe this rezoning is a long overdue step toward balancing the town of Amherst approach to determining our future together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Musanti. Okay, at this time, I guess I will open it up to comments from the board. I'll start just by saying a couple of things. One is thank you to staff for taking care of the multiple iterations of this proposal and consistently providing us with updated copies and providing them to the public as well. That's been extremely helpful, as has, I'd also like to just thank the zoning subcommittee and our board members in general, because we've made an effort this spring to try and bring this article up at every opportunity, to allow for input from each of the board members as they wish, and not to feel that this was being somehow rushed to town meeting. This time, we've had the time to discuss it, and it's, in my mind, it's ready. Does anyone not on the zoning subcommittee have questions for the zoning subcommittee? Okay. Open season for board members. Anyone? Okay. At this time, I will open up to comments from the public. I'd like to remind you that we do have limited time. I want to try to get to hear from everyone who has something to say tonight, so if you have, I would hope you can keep your comments relatively brief, and please address your comments to me, the chair, and I will, board members can raise your hands and staff as you see fit. Mr. Tucker?
Just to remind, as Mr. O'Keefe said earlier, that this portion of the public hearing is addressed to Atkins Corners.
When? After this or a whole other meeting?
After.
It'll be, I should have clarified that. We'll be discussing Atkins Corner first, and then we'll move to the North Amherst Village Center. Obviously, Mr. Musanti's remarks were directed to both, but for the public hearing portion, we are confining this to the South Amherst portion, South Amherst zoning article. Is anyone here to speak to the South Amherst portion?
Vincent O'Connor, Precinct 1, Summer Street. Well, the first comment I have applies to both articles in that the version of the proposal that we have is dated April 2nd, but the warrant was signed last Friday, which was not April 2nd, and I believe that there is a problem with how the board has approached the public notice requirements for this article. Specifically, although maps and other things are often reserved, filed in the town clerk's office and posted on the walls at the, at the town meeting in the middle school auditorium or outside the middle school auditorium, I don't believe that changes to the text of the bylaw. The second portion, the non-form-based portion of the changes are appropriate to be simply on file in the town clerk's office and not placed in the warrant, and I would encourage the board to seek legal opinion about that and say that I believe it's, this is a, not a defective way of providing public notice. So, but, speaking to the substance of the Atkins Corner proposal, one of the difficulties that town meeting members will have, and this goes to the comments of Mr. Epstein at last fall's town meeting, is when you look at the maps, what you see is the existing road layout, and of course, anyone who's been through that location knows that that existing road layout is not going to be there much longer. I have no idea what the timetable for the implementation of the roundabouts is, but they are not they are not shown on this map. And as Mr. Epstein pointed out, there were, and as I experienced as a planning, as a Public Works Committee member, there were various attempts at electronic, trying to figure out what's going to happen at that intersection once the new arrangement is put into practice. But no one really knows how it's going to work. And so I think that this proposal is premature with respect to this area. It's both premature and it's, there's a lack of clarity for the people who are going to vote on it because the road layout that will exist as a result of the implementation of the roundabouts is not shown. And additionally, as a member of the Public Works Committee, I articulated the concern that I don't believe any member, and in fact, I want to commend the Public Works Superintendent for creatively acquiring, you know, through trade-offs of work for land, like the paving of Atkins parking lot and so forth, and the area around Atkins in return for land, to try to reduce and as much as possible eliminate commercial activity on the east side of Route 116 near, between, and around the roundabouts on the east side of 116. And you can, and the reason for that is quite simple. Now, before all the work started on those roundabouts, Atkins had overflow parking on the east side, and people would go back and, you know, walk across 116 back and forth. We thought this was one of the things that the roundabouts were designed to eliminate is to move the road to the east, to essentially move all that area that was used for overflow parking to the west side of 116 and incorporate it into Atkins parking facilities so that the parking facilities at Atkins would not generate pedestrian traffic across the reconfigured intersection at Bay Road and 116. And so I think that the designation of any parcels east of 116 for commercial activity or enhanced residential activity that could include commercial activity, I think, is really contrary to the safety goals that the Public Works Committee and the folks who designed the roundabouts were attempting to achieve. On that grounds, I would urge you to consider removing those designations and leaving the any parcel east of 116 in the R.O. zoning district as it is now. This is just a safety matter. There is one sidewalk or crosswalk that's been provided south of the roundabout and just south of Atkins near the Loop Road. And it's, hopefully that will be used only for access trails and so forth. The other concern I had, which I expressed to the zoning subcommittee, was that, so that overall, my concern is this is premature because the roundabout reconfiguration of that intersection has not been put into place. But I understood there was a particular need of the Applewood organization to have some rezoning done. I asked the zoning subcommittee if they could identify that specifically and to create a way in which that particular zoning need could be addressed separately from this proposal because, as I understood it, that particular zoning need of the Applewood organization would not impact the area around the reconfigured intersection and that this is of some concern to the Applewood organization. And I asked that there be a separate article or that the proposal be configured in such a way that their interest could be served by addressing it specifically rather than through a rezoning that the entire rezoning proposal. I don't see that here. If somebody would be willing to address that, I'd be happy to hear about it, but those are my concerns. I think that the objections that were voiced to this proposal last fall, well, they can't be met until the road is put into place and the impact of the new configuration at that intersection is evaluated. And I think we are at least two or three years off from that in terms of both putting it in place and doing an evaluation. That would give us direction. Furthermore, the proposal, as you can tell from some figures in the rezoning, is going to result in access to the commercial area that now surrounds Atkins but now has no frontage except on 116 and Bay Road. There will be internal, on the frontage road around Atkins, there will be internal access in the present zoning which would allow and enhance and encourage commercial activity. And that quite clearly is one of the reasons the sort of Loop Road around Atkins was proposed and put in the reconfigured area and is part of what the town and the state are doing there. So if there is a desire to improve commercial activity in and around Atkins, that has already been achieved physically by providing the heretofore not very accessible commercial area with a Loop Road that provides frontage all along it. And so I would say that, in a sense, the road project has accomplished what, something that perhaps zoning would not be necessary for, and that we ought to measure the impact of that, the increased access to that commercial property, again, as we measure the impact of the reconfigured road before we attempt any rezoning here. Again, I think this is premature. And I don't know about the form-based zoning, but this area is not as built up as North Amherst, and I don't believe the form-based, that the form-based zoning is as necessary here as it might be in some other place. And so I think, again, you might want to simply rethink that form-based zoning for this area. I simply think that what has been accomplished by the road in terms of enhancing commercial, the opportunity for commercial activity and the need to preserve the safety efforts that are the intent of this reconfigured intersection should be respected, and I would urge the board to withdraw the article and move to dismiss it at Town Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Mr. O'Keefe?
Thank you. I'd like to respond to some of the points that Mr. O'Connor raised, and they're all valid concerns that are worth some thought, and I just want to try to reassure the board that a lot of thought has gone into many of these issues. On the first point about having a separate document that's not part of the warrant and that's dated on April 2nd, there's nothing in that document of substance that differs from what we finalized our approval for at our most recent meeting. So we met last Wednesday, which was the 28th of March, I believe, and finalized the language that is before us now, and we voted that the board recommended, we voted approval of it, and that's it. Nothing has changed since then. We haven't met since then. We haven't changed anything. The version that we have before us now on April 2nd has things like fixes to page numbers. There were duplicate page numbers in some of the earlier versions and things like that that needed to be correct for the warrant, but there are no changes of substance in this version, nor will there be going forward because that would be outside the scope of the article.
Just to clarify, when you say no changes of substance, you mean there's been no changes to the language or to the maps?
Either one.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
The version that the select board had access to when they voted is the one that you received in your packets. So there has been no change as Mr. O'Keefe has described.
So this just, the date on here is basically the printing date?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm satisfied that that issue is not a problem. Does anyone have any on the board have concerns about that issue? Okay.
Just quickly on the other two points, on the status of the roundabouts and the fact that they're not complete yet, obviously, we're aware of that. There's been an issue in the development of this. And you'll note that the zoning in the area where the roundabouts are being built or really have been built at this point is not covered by the new Atkins Corner zoning district except to the extent that it essentially follows the path of the road, but it doesn't include any substantial amount of land on either side of the road. And that's one of the things that has changed since last fall. We did have more area around there proposed to be zoned as Atkins Corners last fall, but we didn't want to encourage development in the immediate vicinity adjacent to the roundabouts. So there's really no potential to develop the land immediately adjacent to the roundabouts under the new zoning. The new zoning extends to the east and west of there, but in the area where the roundabouts themselves are, it does not cover that. In terms of the governing activity around the Ring Road, as it's been called around Atkins, the newly constructed road east of 116, or west of 116 and south of Bay Road that sort of runs around Atkins Market, that's one of, that has been one of the driving forces motivating us to put this zoning in place. Mr. O'Connor is right that commercial activity could go on there under the existing zoning. That area is zoned, limited business right now, but that we would not have anywhere nearly the degree of control that we would have under this zoning. This zoning is intended to guide development in a way that's appropriate to a village center and encourage the types of forms and uses also that we want in a village center. And the existing limited business zoning does that to a much lesser degree and gives the town much less control over what goes there. So there is a sense of urgency in the sense that that road is there now. It's on the ground, and any uses that might take place along that road, if this were not to pass, would happen under the existing limited business zoning, and the town wouldn't have as much control over that. And finally, on the Applewood, we did look at that. We did look at what their zoning needs were. Our conclusion was that the zoning that's most appropriate for them is Atkins Corner zoning district, so it would have been difficult or really unnecessary to have a separate vote on zoning that area as Atkins Corner versus zoning the rest of these areas at Atkins Corner. So the decision that we made was to just include them in the area that is zoned Atkins Corner along with the rest of the areas that are shown in blue on that map.
Mr. O'Keefe, at any time, did we hear from anyone from Applewood?
Yes, we did on more than one occasion, I believe.
And what were their comments?
Their comments were making us aware of their zoning issues and their desire for the town to find ways of addressing them. I think that they did not have a specific approach in mind, but that they wanted us to make sure that they were conforming.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Brestrop.
I just wanted to point out two things. One thing is that last fall, we did receive a letter of support from the executive director of Applewood that she thought that this rezoning that was being proposed, the AC zoning for Applewood, she thought that was appropriate. The second thing I wanted to point out is that the maps do in fact show the roundabout area. What they show is not the pavement itself, but they show the right-of-way, that is, the new right-of-way that encompasses the new roadway. If you look at the Atkins Corner existing map, you can see a shadow of the existing roadway underneath. It's sort of a grayed-out line, but the red lines which show the road are the actual new right-of-way for the new roadway. You can sort of see the bulged areas. They look like sort of bellies, two little bellies.
It's sort of an hourglass shape.
Yeah, those are the areas where the actual circles of the roundabouts would be.
So if we draw a circle in the middle of each of those, it fairly represents the layout of the roads?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Yes, Ms. Kruger.
Yes, a follow-up on the road layout, because I had made a note for myself about this. I would find it very helpful, and I think that Town Meeting would too, to see a separate illustration, if not a literal map, of the new roadway, the paved area, the right-of-way, the roundabout sketched in, the crosswalks, because I don't believe this board, although I think we've asked for it, has actually been able to look at functionally the new roadway system with the roundabouts when we're talking about the parcels in this area that we're considering rezoning. So it doesn't have to be a high level of map sophistication, but I think some kind of illustration would be helpful to me and hopefully to Town Meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Okay, Mr. Tucker?
There is on the Public Works Department website an animated layout of the roundabouts showing prospective traffic flow. They actually have little cars, representations of cars moving through it so that you can see how that works.
Are there any additional members of the public that would like to comment on the South Amherst portion of this article, or the South Amherst article, I should say? Okay, at that time, at this time, we'll open up to comments from the board. Mr. O'Connor, I'll ask you to hold your comments until the North Amherst portion, please.
I have a follow-up on my comment about the Applewood thing. I just wanted to ask.
Can you keep it short?
Oh, yeah.
Like 30 seconds?
I just wanted to.
Well, I mean, we knew that there was support from Applewood. The problem is that we don't know what the actual zoning problem was and how the Atkins Corner zoning would address it as opposed to some other, some other way that it could be addressed. So if we, if somebody could say what the problem is and how this addresses it and how it could have been, you know, what other alternatives were, it would be helpful, at least for my concerns.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brestrop?
Would you like me to answer that?
That would be lovely.
Applewood has been considering expanding their common areas as well as adding a couple of units. I won't say a couple, a few units, but not very many units. They have 103 units right now, and they're considering adding a few to the ends of the buildings. And they have a problem with the existing zoning because of lot coverage and building coverage and lot area. They're way under for all of those things for the zone that they're currently in, which I believe is R.O., R.O.P.U.R.D. Even with the P.U.R.D. allowances for reducing some of those dimensional requirements, they're still way over their limitations. So the AC zoning would allow them to have more flexible ability to develop parts of their property as far as increasing their common areas and as far as potentially adding a few. as far as increasing their common areas and as far as potentially adding a few apartments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tucker?
We, both the staff and subcommittee looked at other zoning districts, existing zoning districts, and none of them met the specific range of needs as well as the proposed AC district, as Mr. O'Keefe described earlier. And that's why it's being proposed.
I'm satisfied this would be a positive for Applewood. Okay. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to close the public hearing.
One second. Any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing? South Amherst portion only. Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. That passed unanimously with Mr. Schreiber absent. Okay. At this time, the board will deliberate as to whether we want to recommend this article to Town Meeting. Comments from the board? Mr. Tucker?
I would just note for clarity that each of these two articles that you're holding and will hold public hearings on this evening contains three elements, as is shown in the warrant. The first element is always the entirety of the form-based zoning guidelines that are not specific to any village center. They are simply the guidelines. The second part is always those guidelines that are either part of the form-based zoning or other aspects of amendments in the bylaw which are specific to a particular village center, in this case Atkins Corner. And the third part of, of the article is always those changes to the official zoning map which establish the new zoning districts.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. So, that's correct. We will be considering, this South Amherst portion includes the, actually does, in our case, when we consider this, I suppose it considers, it contains the entirety of the form-based regulations as well as their application to the Atkins Corner area. So, if anyone from, I guess, anyone from the board has comments about the, that portion of it, I would, I guess, at this time, you could raise those concerns. Mr. O'Keefe?
I move that the board recommend Town Meeting approval of Article 24, Form-Based Village Center rezoning at Atkins Corners.
One second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous with Mr. Schreiber absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to the members of the public who commented on that. We'll move directly to the next public hearing, A-05-12, Form-Based Village Center rezoning Planning Board. This is North Amherst Village Center. To amend the zoning bylaw, to add a new Article 16, Form-Based zoning, to amend Articles 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 12, as well as Section 3.3, Use Classifications and Standards, Use Chart, and Table 3, Dimensional Regulations, including amendments specific to North Amherst Village Center, and to amend the official zoning map for North Amherst Village Center. Again, we will begin with a short report from the opponent, which happens to be our own zoning subcommittee. Then, we'll hear comments from board members, and then I'll open it up to the public. So, zoning subcommittee.
Thank you. So, I'll begin just with a statement of purpose here in terms of the situation in North Amherst, similar to what I described in my most recent comments in South Amherst, where there is a need on the ground driven by the potential for development in South Amherst. There's a much more considerable need, we feel, in North Amherst for the same sorts of issues to be at play. In North Amherst, we have a well-developed, functioning village center. It's a great village center in many respects. It also has its problems, but we think that this zoning proposal is a creative and will be an effective solution to those problems. Obviously, the major issue that we're facing in North Amherst is that there's a large plot of land that used to house the sawmill that is now no longer functioning and is subject to redevelopment. And the existing zoning on the ground there for most of the area that's proposed for NABC zoning north of the Mill River is currently zoned commercial. And commercial, as we've discussed previously, is our most intense commercial zoning district. It's not designed to be friendly to residential uses, and it allows a very wide range of commercial activities that we feel are potentially objectionable in close proximity to an established village center. So, there's a lot that could potentially happen under the existing commercial zoning that would not be at all appropriate for the area that's there now. And that's quite a substantial commercial, quite a substantial area that's zoned as commercial currently. So, that's the need that we have on the ground there to do something while we're looking in the big picture at doing rezoning in North Amherst. So, as with in Atkins Corner, we felt that creating a new zoning district and applying the form-based regulations that I described earlier would be an appropriate response to that and help guide development there. First of all, the new, the new zoning district would allow a range of uses that are much more appropriate for the area rather than allowing some of the potentially objectionable uses that are allowed under commercial. But, secondly, it would obviously impose form-based regulations that aren't in place now under commercial. So, the town would have a great deal of ability to control and ensure that any development that took place there meets our regulations and meets what we're seeking to promote and encourage in our village centers. So, that's the main impetus behind this zoning proposal. So, I'd like to spend a bit more time than I did in South Amherst talking about the changes on the map, because we do have a fairly substantial set of changes to the map. We got a very substantial amount of feedback from members of the community about what we proposed last fall, and we have tried, we've tried our best to be responsive to that and to make modifications to meet the needs of everybody who's involved in the process. So, in particular, the, first of all, the North Amherst Village Center zoning district itself has been scaled back in several ways. In particular, it used to stretch to the west, almost all the way to Route 116 in the northwest portion. If you look at the two maps, the area that's zoned red, commercial, and the existing zoning, that northwestern section last fall was proposed to be NABC. That's pretty substantially removed from Sunderland Road, and we felt that it would not serve much purpose having NABC zoning there. It's undeveloped now. A lot of it is wet. So, we're proposing taking NABC away from that and zoning that whole area to the west as RLD, which is a very low-impact residential zoning use. Another major change from what we proposed last fall was along Montague Road. Last fall, we were looking to, we've never really been looking at using NABC zoning itself along Montague Road. Last fall's proposal did not have that, and this proposal does not have that. But, what we proposed last fall was using Village Center Residence, which is a residential zoning district that's more intense than the existing RN zoning, but not as intense as NABC. Last fall, we proposed using Village Center Residential zoning along the stretch of Montague Road north of the Mill River and basically going up to, almost all the way to Coles Road at the northern edge on both sides of Montague Road. There was fairly substantial opposition to that. People who live in that area did not like that, and we heard many comments to that effect. And so, what we're proposing now is to restrict the change for Village Center Residential to the area that's just immediately north of the Mill River. This is the small area that's, has a yellowish background and vertical stripes on it, north of the green section that represents the Mill River. That's basically going from the river north, a couple of properties basically to the entrance to the Mill River Recreation Area, the driveway that leads in there. So, both sides of the street would be RVC, which is the residential zoning district that's designed for use around our village centers. It's used in many other locations throughout town, including existing zoning that's on the ground in North Amherst. You can see along Pine Street, on the north side of Pine Street, to the west of the central area, and also along North Pleasant Street, south of the central area. Both of those areas have today existing village center residential zoning. And so, this would add that zoning to that small section along Montague Road, immediately north of the Mill River. That's closest to the central part of the village center. Along with the parcel at the, just north of there, at the intersection with Coles Road, which is the Jones Family Homestead, the building that has had a variety of uses over the years. It's mostly residential, but it has offices in it now and has had office and other uses associated with it for a long period of time. So, that would be RVC also, but no NABC along Montague Road. And the area proposed to be zoned as Village Center Residential is substantially reduced compared to what we looked at last fall. Another fairly substantial change that we haven't really talked much about yet tonight was the use of the Form-Based Overlay District. What this proposal contains, as did the one last fall, is an overlay district that, on this map, is labeled RVF. That's Residential Village Form is what that means. That would be an overlay district in which there would be no change in use from the underlying zoning district. It would still be a residential zoning district that allowed exactly the same uses that it allows now, but the Form-Based Regulations would apply in that overlay district. And the idea here is that in areas surrounding the NABC villages, in areas surrounding the NABC zoning district, which also uses those Form-Based Regulations, the areas around it would also use the same set of Form-Based Regulations, so you'd have some continuity and preserve the character and encourage the types of development patterns that, that we like and that we're trying to encourage around the village center. So, that's what the Form-Based Overlay District would do. Last fall, we had quite substantially larger area proposed for, to use that Form-Based Overlay District. It extended along Montague Road north of Coles Road for two or three or four properties, north of there on both sides of Montague Road, and also to the, to the west along Pine Street, and I think, or to the west along Meadow Street, I mean, and to the east along Pine Street. We heard some concerns from people who were in that area that were, were concerned about what the impact of that would be on their properties, whether that would impose regulations that were maybe unnecessarily burdensome on houses that were outside of the immediate village center zoning district. And so, we scaled that back considerably, removed it from the sections of Montague Road mostly to the north. And right now, what we're proposing is that overlay district would only apply to the areas that are zoned RVC. And so, that's the four areas on the map that are shown in the same pattern, which has a yellow background and a vertical red striping pattern to it. Those areas would have the Form-Based Overlay Regulations, but no other areas would. And that represents a substantial reduction compared to what we proposed last fall.
That's not reflected on Figure 1B, North Amherst rezoning map.
It, it is actually, 1B. So, the areas that I'm talking about are the yellow background vertical stripe.
I'm talking about the-
He's talking about the first one on the detail map. He's correct.
I was working on the theory that the original-
That needs to be changed.
-Form-Based Overlay was based on this map.
He's correct. In that first map, it was not moved, removed from the RN.
Right. It was removed from several other areas, but not that one.
So, that is an error. There-
Yes.
And we will fix that.
The error is on, if you have the packet at the back, it's the, it's the second-to-last paper, and it's, it looks like this. The area, we're talking about the Form-Based Overlay, which is identified on the map by the letters in black, R-VF. North of Cowles Road, the references to RVF are in error and should not be there. I don't know about the ones on Meadow Street and on North Pleasant Street, south of-
Those are correct.
Those are correct?
Those are correct.
Yes.
Yeah. It is only along, in the areas that are not zoned RVC in the Montague Road character.
And so, it's, so it's, it's all, the part, north of Mill River on Montague Road.
Correct.
None of that is RVF, except for the Cowles property.
Correct. So, what's shown on the third map is an accurate representation of the proposed change. That's a little bit easier to look at because it shows what would be RVC with the overlay district. The first map is basically a description of what is changing, and that, that's the part that's inaccurate. We had been looking at that earlier, but we ended up changing our minds about that. So, that was, that had been an earlier version of it that hasn't yet been removed.
Okay. Would you like to proceed?
Is it correct that any time it says RN, there should not be slash RVF after it?
That, that's a correct statement, yes. And so, on that first map, that appears that I can see one, two, three times exactly as you go up Montague Road. The correct designation there should just be RN in each of those three instances. One is just north of the Mill River entrance. One is north of the Summer Street-Coles Road intersection, and one is further up north toward Pulpit Hill Road. In each of those three sections, that should read just RN. The RVF is a, is a error. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Weber.
I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation on that. But, there was a surprise, that had been removed.
It was a recent change. We, we made that change at our most recent meeting, so you might not have seen it unless you've been diligently following our, our work. I think I covered all of the map changes that I wanted to cover. I'm just double-checking to make sure that there's nothing that I didn't specifically talk about. And so, yeah, that's true. And so, I will stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Comments from the board? Or questions?
Question?
Yes, Mr. Rosnoy.
If we approve this, would we need to do so recognizing that at Town Meeting, we would be presenting language along the lines of, except for, for the following amendment, which is to say a substitute map for this page? That would then be presented to Town Meeting?
There are two maps that refer to Figure 1 in the packet as it stands. We will check with Town Council, but I'm reasonably certain then we can correct the erroneous one, since there is an accurate one in existence. since there is an accurate one in existence in the packet, without having to make a motion. But we'll check with town council.
So today, we would, if presuming we would be recommending this to town meeting for approval, we would just be approving the package as it exists?
I think that's what Mr. Tucker stated, yes.
Okay. At this time, I'll open it up to comments from the public. So just raise your hand, come forward, identify yourself, and let us know your thoughts. Let's start at the very back.
Paige Wilder, Precinct 10. I just have a question. When Mr. O'Keefe was describing his first point, there was, he said there were substantial changes to the NAVC designation from the previous. And I think he said that it was smaller than the existing commercial area. Does that mean that striped section above the green zone to the left of the blue section?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
The very first point you made was that the NAVC had been reduced substantially. I'm asking what that reduction was.
The reduction, the largest area of reduction relative to what we proposed last fall is the westernmost extent of the red commercial district in the map that's labeled North Amherst Existing Zoning. Last fall, our proposal, in the proposal last fall, the boundaries of the NAVC followed the commercial district boundaries in that area.
So it's that little striped piece next to the blue? That's substantial?
That's correct, yes.
That's what I was asking.
Thanks.
Hit my man, put my pick me up. Last fall, also the area south of the river, not including the Schwartz Farm, but also going all the way to Route 116, was included in the NAVC, and that too has been removed entirely. So it's a line about like this. Everything west of there has been removed from the NAVC.
So it's different from the first map?
My name is Louise Levine. I live at 113 North Pleasant Street. So just downstream from this proposed development. I've spoken to the Subcommittee a number of times. It's hard to know where to start. I don't think that the North Amherst Village Center is at all comparable to the Atkins Corner. And one of the main reasons is because we're not talking about the reality of what will take, what will be happening in North Amherst, which will be student housing. According to this nice letter from Melissa Perot, if we're talking 400 to 500 rental units, that's 1,600 to 2,000 students. That's going to be a tremendous change to the nature of North Amherst, which is already under a lot of pressure from a huge number of student rental units, as you already know. They're not well taken care of. There's a lot of noise. There's a lot of unstableness, instability, I guess, in North Amherst. This will only, I think, destabilize that area more. I don't think people in North Amherst object to the idea of having either commercial activity in the sense of having more shops, or to having housing units if we felt there was some control over who was living there, if there were a variety of age groups, if we could have senior housing there, for example. If we could have houses for small families. All of that would be great, because the general idea of density of development in the Village Center is wonderful. But what I think is missing is that UMass has tried to make North Amherst their Village Center. And I don't think North Amherst should be UMass's Village Center. It should be the Village Center for the residents who live there more permanently. And I know the town is having a hard time grappling with UMass's inability to house students, but I don't think that the default solution should be that North Amherst becomes a sort of student slum, which is really where it's heading. And I think it's a dangerous precedent to allow this kind of change in zoning that will create this effect before you know that you can control the effect that you're going to have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Keefe?
I'd just quickly like to respond that the figure cited there in terms of the number of apartments or housing units and the number of students or anybody who could live there is far beyond what we envisioned being possible under the proposed zoning. We're looking at, we've been using a figure of perhaps 12 to 14 units per acre at a maximum. And there's no way that that number of units could be squeezed into any part of this.
Could you advise the rest of the board what letter you're referring to?
I'm not sure what letter is being referred to either, but there was a figure cited of, I can't remember, was it 400 units or?
400 to 500.
400 to 500 units. Is just not feasible under the, given the size of the area in question.
Thank you, Mr. O'Keefe. Ms. Brestrop?
I'm afraid that I may have neglected to pass that out. I did put it on the back table, but I'll pass it out right now.
Thank you very much.
I don't think we received it in time. We'll put it in your package.
Mr. Crowner?
In addition to the total number of units, that might be possible. The Form-Based Standards would also regulate the kinds of units that were in there. So they wouldn't all be four-bedroom units. They would have to be one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units, three-bedroom units. And they also, there also would be possibly studio apartments.
We have to hear you for some of the...
All right. So it's not just the, the number of units that seems high. It's also the total number of bedrooms. So the Form Standards would serve to decrease the number of bedrooms overall.
Mr. Tucker?
If I may. The town is working on addressing the housing problem on a whole range of fronts. And we have to use the tools that we have available. Zoning as a tool for doing that is not, cannot do the thing that you're asking to do. We cannot, through zoning, say, here is who can live here, and here is who cannot. That question was settled back in the 1970s through Supreme Court cases. You cannot say who gets to live somewhere. What you can do instead is, as Mr. Crowner described, you can dictate the range of bedroom sizes. You can try and affect the cost of units through, Form-Based Code also essentially mandates higher quality through design than you might well get otherwise if someone was trying to create an economically efficient residential, multi-unit residential development. It ends up costing more, which means that the units cost more. At the same time, if you get over 10 units, you start adding affordable units under the town's inclusionary zoning requirements. Since all of these multi-unit uses, with the exception of mixed uses, are by special permit, they're caught by our inclusionary zoning requirements. So you end up with a balance of slightly higher market rate uses and affordable, and truly affordable units. But you cannot through, just through zoning, and it is not, Louis and I have had this conversation in meetings a number of times. You cannot just through zoning say, here is, here is all of what we want to do in this place. You have to use other regulations as well, some of which are not burdened by the same limitations. Also coming to the Springtown Meeting will be, we had a public hearing on this at the last Planning Board meeting, regulations addressing residential parking design, which have the effect of limiting the ways in which single-family residences and other small unit, small multi-unit developments can use their properties. And that begins to restrict it. We have other regulations coming to the fall that are general bylaws, which are not affected by grandfathering, as zoning is. We have now onboard two, two new people who will be enforcing this. We have a new building commissioner who'll be starting this week. We have a new code enforcement person who started last week. You will start to see some impact on particularly the problem properties fairly quickly and over the summer. But we can only use the tools we have for what they can do. We can't use zoning to say, you there, you're causing a problem. You can't live here. You have to do it in other ways, more subtle ways. And that's what this attempts to do.
Thank you. You'll have to come forward and use the mic, please.
Paige Wilder, Precinct 10. I would just like to know if zoning can dictate owner-occupied housing?
Mr. Tucker?
Probably not, as a broad question. What you can do, and what we do sometimes through the permit process, if there are multi-unit developments or changes to existing buildings that turn them into multi-unit developments, depending on the size and potential impacts, the permit body will add as a condition that there must be an owner-occupant or a resident manager to the property. It's probably possible at some level to do that with uses, just as in the regulations, we would have to tread carefully, because you begin to wander into the same problems you would have with other kinds of zoning.
If, let's, let's hear from some other people first and see if it gets addressed, okay? Yes.
Sarah Lecor, representing WD Coles and Precinct 9. I'd like to address the map particularly. The current map that you're seeing is the latest iteration in many, the changes, some of the changes that you're looking at were just made last week, at last Wednesday's meeting. And in particular, two pieces, the map, you'll note, jogs, I'm speaking along Montague Road on the west side, where you have an RVC, and then an RN district, and then another piece of RVC. And the line now jogs out. And that was in a discussion brought up regarding the barn. And I would like to know that we objected to zoning regarding a building, because the line was essentially moved to include that building in the RN. And at issue here is, I believe people were trying to preserve that building, but in the end, the actual reality is you have not, because if it remains an RN, we can't do anything with it. There's no other uses, and we have no more density. And so you're keeping a single line at 110 feet, which is what the last several maps were, is what we would propose and what we would like to see there. The other issue is with, related to the RVC, then RN, then RVC, going along Montague Road, is not only do you sort of end up with an odd streetscape, particularly with the RVF removed from the RN, if you can get my gist. So you have a Form-Based Overlay, then it, you don't have it for three buildings, and then you do have it again for one building. Also, if you look at where those, the little sliver of RVC, where at 134 Montague Road, and the NAVC, and that whole, but, you have three zones there on one parcel of land within about a two-acre area, which is really just sort of unwieldy, to say the least. That little sliver had been NAVC in the last proposal. We understand what the zoning Subcommittee was trying to do. We understood neighbors' concerns. And everybody went round and round this. But I'm not convinced this is the solution. I don't think we've solved all the problems there. And one other minor point, the, there's a little sliver north of Coles Road that does not also, does not follow the property boundary, that was changed based on natural heritage bubbles. And I would just like to say, and the zoning Subcommittee has heard me say this, to zone based on bubbles that change every time a new map comes out from the state also seems odd. And I would suggest that that remain at the property boundary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. You can ask your follow-up now, if you like. I don't see any hands.
Janet Keller, 120 Pulpit Hill Road. And I need to apologize, because I've been away, so you guys have been moving on, and I'm just doing a lot of catch-up this evening. But I would like to say that I do appreciate all the work that the Subcommittee has done and the efforts they have made to pull back in areas where the original NAVC zoning way overreached into very wet areas, very sensitive areas, and farm areas. That said, this is still a very big area that is covered. And lots of people have asked us, well, what would you have? And we would say, to us, a Village Center is not another town center. It's a Village Center. It's compact development around a civic core. We would have been content with something that could stay within the interior of that commercial zone. What causes us to go, what's going on here is when we look at north of Coles Road, we look at a river resource area. We look at, we look at, different people look at different things and, and look at the same thing and see something different. We see, this apparently has resources that the states that are really important. We think that's important to recognize north of Coles Road. So while we're appreciative of the changes that are made, and we still are worried about the things that are at risk here. So, and I would note that among those are the National Historic Register properties that, as you know, the Committee did look at, and the Planning Department did look at, trying to get those into a local historic district to protect them. But going into this zoning, they're zoned NAVC for an increase in density. That looks to me like an invitation to tear them down if you can make more money on that building. So you may see it differently. That's the kind of worry that we have. So it's been said many times that zoning can't solve everything. And we couldn't agree more, and that's why we've kept advocating for doing some of the other things first. I'm going to do that again. I'm going to ask again, as for something we asked before, is that the flood zone maps be updated? That, we think that's critically important. We think it's an economic development issue. The Deerfield Inn is not going to be able to open again until June. All that time, it's been knocked out since Hurricane Irene when it was flooded. So this is a flood-prone area. Those maps really need to be updated. Let me see what else I wanted to say. Very large area, it looks, it's still too big, but appreciate what you've done. And I'll leave you with some of the maps. And again, I hope, there's some, still some typos in here. I didn't get back in time to make this look the way I really wanted it to, but I think there's still some good information in here. And I'll leave it with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, please come forward.
And thanks to the gentleman who brought it.
Thanks.
Had some technical difficulties as well.
It's okay. Yeah, we'll, I'll pass him down to the rest of the board. Sure. Absolutely. That's a great idea. Thank you. Yes, please.
Hi. My name is Maureen Adams, and I'm District 10 on Beston Street. I've been somewhat of a faithful attendee with the zoning Subcommittee meetings, and I really need to hand it to you. I think you've done a wonderful job in responding... I think you've done a wonderful job in responding to our concerns. And so, of course, here we are again with more concerns that we very much hope you will respond to. I agree that you've done a fine job of pulling back on some of those perimeters of NABC. It really did feel to me like another Amherst Town Business Center more than a village center. And it felt more like sprawl than something that was really going to be focused and developed. And I mentioned before, and I'm particularly concerned about the northern perimeter of Kohl's Road. I mean, I look at the North Amherst Protected Lands map and I see that a lot of that is still wetland, it's lowland. And when I take seriously the word of Kohl's representatives that the, really the only market that one is looking at here is not commercial, but is residential and that 60% of the residential market is student market, then indeed, I think we are left to conclude that the development that would be taking place in this lowland floodplains area would be fairly dense student housing. So, it's not that I am objecting to student housing. My own lifeblood is in the university. But I am concerned that we do a better job of dealing with all of these competing needs that we have in this larger town. We clearly need the taxes. We clearly need the development. We clearly need quality off-campus housing for students. We clearly need to maintain intact neighborhoods. And we need to make sure that those townhouses and apartments are not built on areas that are going to be prone to flooding when we know that we are facing climate change and that what might have been a 100-year floodplain when maps were designed sometime prior to our concern about climate change may now indeed be 20- or 10-year floodplains. So, I really have several points that I'm wanting to leave with you and they really are the chronic points that we raise time and again, which is that you continue in your efforts to meet our competing needs. We really want all of these things to happen, but we do not want tilting neighborhoods in the residential areas, nor do we want large numbers of student housing built on vulnerable land that should be preserved for other purposes. Surely, there are other parts of North Amherst or other parts of Amherst that would be more appropriate for this use. And just to kind of add a last point, I was very glad to hear that inspection and enforcement officers have finally been hired. I think we are watching and waiting very carefully to see what kind of job they will do before we have confidence in endorsing large amounts of student housing in the near future of our development plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Louis Greenbaum, Precinct 1, 298 Montague Road. I want to begin by apologizing because I have, through no one's fault except my own hearing impairment. And I must say that it is very daunting and terribly discouraging to have to sit in a room like this, which transacts the very lifeblood business of the community with people who cannot hear, cannot hear. I apologize only for the fact that I've heard virtually nothing, that is to say, something that I was capable of hearing. And therefore, if I'm repeating anything that I was saying, I'd like to extend my apology in advance. That is certainly not my intention. The things that I have to say are really very few and very simple. I think I heard allusions that were made before to one of the finest hours that I can remember in the years that I lived in Amherst. And that was at the announcement of the possibility of the rezoning of North Amherst. We had a community get-together called the charrette. There was what I think any honest person would admit, almost a principle of general will, which emerged from those proceedings. That is to say, there were at least a half a dozen questions that we felt very strongly about as a community. And there were perhaps two or three that we felt a little bit more strongly than just strong. It became a matter of faith and a shared experience among the people who had come. The first among all of these was, of course, the question that the planning board has not even considered. It seems to me absolutely indispensable before you can talk about anything as basic as rezoning neighborhoods. You are all aware, I am sure, about the terrible congestion that exists in the village center in North Amherst. You surely understand that we have an almost impossible flow of traffic from five different arterial highways and streets that converge in that center. Let us add a sixth. Perhaps all of you are aware that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts gave us $100,000 in order to rectify the signal system on Meadow Street in North Amherst and Route 116, characterizing it as one of the most dangerous crossings in any of the towns and the communities of Amherst. The second thing, of course, that we felt very strongly about, this kind of shared faith, was that North Amherst, for years, for years, and everyone knows this, has been the dumping ground for cheap housing, for multiple dwellings, for large complexes of low-cost housing. And therefore, we came out of the charrette absolutely persuaded and nearly unanimous that we wanted no more of these multiple-dwelling housing north of Meadow Street in North Amherst. We had more than our share with the several thousand units that are available for students and for others. Didn't you hear this? Is this something that didn't come to the planning board? We are a bunch of citizens who are addressing fellow citizens, servants of the community. We felt very strongly about this. It would completely, if there is anything to the possibility of 400 to 500 units, this would completely, completely change the nature and the quality and the aspect and the living in our neighborhood, completely. Obviously, the decision will be made at town meeting. But unless I do not understand, and that is a decided possibility since I only picked up the documentation a few moments ago like everybody else did, exactly how you come down on the possibility and accepting the total responsibility of seeing a village center 200 years old with evidences so pronounced and so charming and so delightful of the people who lived there for two centuries, that this stands in very substantial peril of being ruined and of being completely transformed. So, I guess what I'm asking you is, we had been assured from the beginning that the consideration of the citizens of North Amherst would be considered. We came by in a series of meetings that were held by Mr. O'Keefe and his colleagues on the planning board to address these issues that we made very plain and very clear and certainly with heartfelt emphasis as a point of conviction for many of us who live there and do not want to see the subversion and destruction and the way of life that we have enjoyed in that part of the town of Amherst.
Thank you, Mr. Greenbaum. Yes, in the brown. Orange. Sorry. Rust. My color vocabulary is limited.
That's why they have form-based color zones. Laura Fitch, Precinct 1, Pulpit Hill Road, also representing the Puffer Garnier family. So, I just want to remind folks that actually, the North Amherst that I see on a daily basis when I bicycle and walk, which is almost daily in and through North Amherst, is one of Cracks sidewalks where I walk into, you know, sometimes if I walk at night down to the video store, I can walk into any number of things. Cars that are parked there or mailboxes. And there was a bicyclist that was killed there just a few years ago, which just horrified me because my children bike there and I encourage them to bike because I think it's healthy for them. But that was really scary. I want to see form-based zone because I like to, because I don't believe the town is going to fix some of these problems on their own. I think that when a developer comes in and goes through a special permit process and has to answer to folks who sit here in this room tonight with us, that they will be, you know, have to present really good quality projects in order for them to get permitted. And I look forward to having really good quality projects in my neighborhood. And so, also, I object to the former, when Louis Greenbaum speaks about the collective "we." I was at the charrette, I am not the "we" that he represents. I am also a North Amherst resident and my perspective is very different than his. And he speaks with great passion, but he's leaving me out in that equation. So, I think, and the other thing I want to say is that in the drawings that I did for the Puffer family, they were described as being very attractive and a lot of people said, "Wow, would that really happen?" And I just want to say that they are a response by a fairly ordinary, small-town architect, myself, to the form-based zone. I opened the code, I read it, and that was my response. And if people liked what they saw, guess what? They can have more of that if they vote this in. So, if you want good quality projects, please support it.
Thank you very much.
Jim Wald, and I live on old Montague Road, not Montague Road, but close enough with my friends and neighbors here. And I was the chair of the Comprehensive Planning Committee that produced the master plan. And I was the chair of the Historical Commission. And I'm currently the vice-chair also of the Local Historic District Study Committee. So, I just wanted to address a couple of the points here. I mean, number one with village centers, I think it's safe to say on behalf of the master plan committee, some of whose members are here and town staff, that we had this discussion many times in the last few years, but I think we took a larger view of village centers. There's no distinction between a village center and a town center. Amherst has multiple village centers, they're all called village centers. The zoning language calls them village centers. It doesn't distinguish on that level between village and town. So, that's one thing. And part of that is to have a viable center, which, and to make it viable, you define the center not as something small, but something with a certain amount of capacity for growth and development. So, that's one point. We also tend to think of village centers in a broad sense, for example, as almost like amoebas or barbells, you know, several village centers with connecting areas in between with a little bit less growth, stretching generally east, from west to east, say, from North Amherst Center to Cushman. You know, two centers with a kind of varied degree of development in between that. So, that's one thing. I want to address also the question of historic resources. I think, on the contrary, the proposed plan is a sound one. It corresponds in general to best practices in the field for planning, urban design, and historic preservation. And we like form-based codes because they give us flexibility. I mean, both, they manage to give us both flexibility and precision, I think, as opposed to Mr. O'Keefe has very eloquently explained these complex plans and tried to indicate, I think, wide-dimensional regulations don't get you where you want to go sometimes. We also, therefore, definitely do not see this as a threat to historic resources. On the contrary, I'd also point out, by the way, that the actual North Amherst Historic, National Historic Register District extends from the library southward, east, and west. It doesn't encompass the area we're talking about mostly for NABC. There are many historic structures there, but that's a distinction. As far as those structures go, we have certain tools in place, above all, the demolition delay law. Any proposal to make a major change to that constitutes demolition in a legal sense would be reviewed by the Historical Commission, which has the right to impose a year-long delay. So, there's always that in place. But what the design guidelines under form-based codes would do, I think, would help us to make sure that the neighborhood looks the way we want it to look. It's far from allowing bad things, it should encourage good things. You know, because the whole point of form-based codes is that there's a, numbers get you, lot coverage, heights, dimensions get you only so far. What people value about neighborhoods, and our North Amherst residents feel very strongly about theirs, as you can hear, is the look and feel and the character. And so, I think form-based codes are a good way to get there. They're a way to prevent unwanted, or we call that, I think, objectionable development. And I think also that to suggest that the mere fact of infill, which should not be confused with sprawl, is a threat to historic resources, I think, is also confusing. You can have terrible development that's sprawled and loosely built, uses space ineffectively. You can have good development that's compact. So, I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. O'Connor, can you keep it to five minutes, please?
Vince O'Connor, Precinct 1, Summer Street. I will say again what I've said in other occasions. I think the form-based zoning might be better as a planning board regulation rather than part of the zoning bylaw. And with respect to the, especially the area north of Kohl's Road, I would say that any, anyone who's familiar with areas that are built on wet, wet parts of town, like Salem Place, has only to go there during certain seasons of the year. And you can just, you can sense in the buildings what impact having extremely wet areas right adjacent to a building are. I don't think it's healthy or good or good building practice. This proposal, in my opinion, promotes not commercial development, which might benefit the town's tax base, but residential development, which I think will have a, either no impact at all or a negative impact, that the services required will outstrip the taxes generated. And I just refer you to the two maps, the final two maps for North Amherst. One that shows the red area, which is zone commercial, and the other shows North Amherst Village Center. This proposal is about promoting residential development. And the reason is this. We were told at the fall town meeting last year by the spokesperson for the WD Kohl's company that joint residential-commercial activity just is not financially viable these days in this area. And that what's viable is residential use. And the commercial district does not allow apartments or townhouses. It allows residential use on the upper floors of commercial or retail businesses. And so, when you take away the requirement that there be a commercial or retail use on the ground floor and replace it with residential uses, which are allowed under the North Amherst Village Center, you're essentially, in essence, probably doubling the number of housing units that can be built there. I'm amazed that we have continually asked for the planning department to produce estimates of the likely number of housing units that would be created, the maximum number that could be created with the proposed zoning. We have yet to see anything other than verbal estimates. And I don't think that's credible. We, in the past, the planning board has been able to produce such things or willing to produce them, and we have seen nothing about this proposal. And until we see something that is step by step by step done, the statements that this, that the density will be this, that, or the other thing with no backup at all, I think are simply not credible. So, I think this is about promoting, I think, residential development that I think is, would be unwise. Our proposal was that the town deal with the infrastructure. We don't need the form-based zoning to do infrastructure work. Anyone who wants to go to Meadow Street and see what the Public Works Department has done when they reconstructed that road, there are bicycle lanes on both sides. done when they reconstructed that road, there are bicycle lanes on both sides, there are sidewalks on both sides. It is a perfectly good, usable, modern street, and if the, if, as I understand will be the case this summer, if Sunderland Road is reconstructed in the same manner, every, every issue that needs to be addressed will be addressed. And that is what I think should happen first. Doing the infrastructure, reconstructing Sunderland Road, making it possible to have the center of the village center, the, the North Church, be commercially reused in some way that's beneficial to the community, not simply add more residential units without adding any more commercial activity whatsoever. There's not a thing in this proposal that will improve the prospect for commercial activity. And so I'm, I'm just sorry that I can't support this. I think that the, and I, that I think it's going to meet the same level of opposition it met last November, because the central focus has not changed. You've reduced the scope of the proposal, but, and in some areas, the reduction in scope is meaningless because there are areas that couldn't be built on anyway. But I really, I, what the North Amherst Village Center needs is the promotion of, of commercial and retail activity. And this proposal promotes residential activity and construction. And it is just completely, in my opinion, misdirected. It will have no impact on the tax base at all, if, if not having a negative impact because all the police activity that is now focused on Meadow Street and North, and North Pleasant Street will end up having to be divided and moved northward. So I'm, I'm sorry, I appreciate all your efforts to try to be responsive, but I don't think they have gotten to the core of the problem with this zoning proposal. And I would just urge you to, to withdraw it, to move to dismiss it at town meeting, and to refocus your efforts toward the core of the village center and increase commercial activity.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Does anyone who hasn't had a chance to speak yet like to come forward?
Still Sarah LaCour, W.D. Coles and Precinct 9. I would like to address Mr. O'Connor's comments. I, I don't know exactly what he was referring to the comments, but in terms of, I think some of the issue here is, what we're looking to do is a mixed-use village. And that doesn't mean that there's a mix of uses in every building. It means there's a mix of uses throughout the village. So in existing commercial zone, you can't have any residential use unless it's in a mixed-use building. So therefore, your entire village would be individual mixed-use buildings. What we as planners and landscape architects and all the people that have been working on this for years, a mixed-use village would allow some level of purely residential, some level of purely commercial and retail, and then all those uses mix for your village center. I don't, as I said, I don't know the comments he's referring to, but right now, in the current economic climate, having all mixed-use buildings with an entire first floor of commercial space, which is what allowed now, you'd have your residential, second, third floors, every single first floor would be commercial space, and that will not be rented. You cannot rent it now. It's not economically viable, so nothing would get built. Right now, the way this has been so diligently put together, there are several components in it, including the last one most recently, under the townhouse and apartment piece, where, I forget the wording we found, but a significant, townhouses or apartments cannot be a significant portion of a streetscape. And there's lots of bits and pieces like that that are written into this bylaw that will keep it from ever being purely residential. It will be a mix in a variety of buildings, and that will, is what gives you the great dynamic of a village center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Perot, did you want to follow up still?
Oh, well, the question I had was, Mr. Tucker was saying that you cannot use zoning to decide who's going to live somewhere, but one of the benefits of Atkins Corner is that you have a retirement village there, is it not? And so you, you have a diversity of ages already there, you have Applewood. Could the zoning department request or in some way encourage that to be built as part of the North Amherst development? That would diversify the age of people who are living there. If we leave it open to just the development that comes, we know that students will be there, and there will not be diversity. And it seems to me, and what Mr. O'Connor said was right about commercial development, if we only have students there, the commercial development that will follow will be very limited to liquor stores and pizza stores. And if you have more diverse age groups, as in a senior community or families, you will get more diverse commercial activity there. So I just wish you would try to guide the development that will happen there, so that we have diverse ages, and that we keep more, more of people who are there who are, want to be permanent residents and who have some commitment to the area. And our problem now in North Amherst is we have so many students with so little commitment to the area, and they cause a great deal of problems. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Tucker?
I think I spoke to this, this specific issue earlier, that you can, you can encourage by what it is that you allow through design. You can create strictures through which the kinds of developments that come through them that survive the filter are the kinds that are not comfortable for students, although students are probably willing to put up with anything if they can afford it. You cannot prevent that. What zoning does is open and close doors. It does not say, I'm sorry, everyone can go through this door except you. We can encourage, we can through conversations with property owners, through conversations with regional providers of living care communities, or whatever uses that, that we want to occur in a village center, try and encourage that. And we can try and talk to property owners about ways to do that. We cannot require it through zoning. That's, and what we're talking about tonight is the zoning. But again, it's absolutely understandable. We keep bringing expectations to what zoning can do, zoning can't do. We need to focus on what it is that the zoning is going to do, and the other things will be dealt with in other ways.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Oh, if I may, I'm sorry. Just, just to cite specifically, both Mr. O'Connor and Ms. LaCour were referring to relative balance of residential and commercial uses. Currently, in the, as proposed, in the NAVC district, neither townhouses nor apartments are permitted on the portion of any lot fronting on Sunderland Road to a depth of 100 feet. The language that Ms. LaCour was referring to, townhouses and apartment developments proposed on Coles Road are not intended to occupy significant continuous segments of street frontage to the exclusion of other uses, but instead to contribute to a village center streetscape composed of and providing a balanced mix of diverse uses. Is also the case that mixed uses themselves, used buildings that contain both residential and commercial activity in the NAVC district on Sunderland Road can have no more than 10% of what's happening on the ground floor in any way referenced to or functioning or supporting the residential uses, except in terms of entrances and exits and so forth. All of that has to be on the second floor within, within 100 feet. So part of what the zoning is trying to do is create areas where residential activity really can't happen or can happen only selectively. Again, all of those uses, except for the mixed-use buildings, require a special permit in the first place, which is discretionary, and can not only be denied if the permit-granting authority thinks that it has grounds to do so, but can be strongly conditioned, can be reduced in scope if it looks like the traffic impacts are going to be too great for what exists at the time the proposal is made. There are just a whole range of controls in this that are not entirely visible in the language of the bylaw, but in its operation instead, instead of the language itself.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Melissa Perot of Summer Street. Just a clarification, under commercial zoning, I believe, one of the uses that is allowed is senior housing, specifically. Correct?
Good question. Could you repeat the question, please?
One, no, it's a statement. I believe, one of the permitted uses under commercial zoning, which exists now in the triangle, is senior housing. Therefore, there is zoning that specifically targets, if you like, a population.
That's correct. It's currently allowed under special permit. Yes, Mr. O'Keefe?
So while that's true, I would object to the characterization of that as targeting a population. There, there is absolutely no way that our commercial zoning could be characterized as encouraging or targeting residential uses. They're, they're just barely allowed to the degree that they're allowed at all under commercial zoning. And it is much more friendly to commercial development, in particular, commercial development that's automobile-related and gas stations and restaurants and things like that. Those are the types of things that are...
Can you take closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry, I was pointing out that commercial develop, that the commercial zone that we have is, is not in any way designed to be encouraging of residential uses in general. It's much more aimed at commercial uses, hence the name.
If I may, there are...
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
There are two use categories that address senior housing in the bylaws as it stands. One is called congregate housing for the elderly or disabled, and that is allowed under a special permit in both the commercial district and the two proposed mixed-use districts under form-based code. Those are generally smaller facilities. They are like the Fisher home. They are not larger substantial communities like living care communities. Living care communities would fall under a different use category, and they are not permitted. It's an N in the commercial district now. They are, however, permitted through a special permit in the NAVC district. So in terms of the range of independent living people 55 years or older, kinds of development, you're principally talking about living care communities, and those are not currently allowed in the commercial district, whereas they are permitted through a special permit in both of the mixed-use, form-based districts.
Thank you for the clarification. Anyone who hasn't had a chance to speak yet? Let's take some commentary from the board. Anyone have questions? I'll start. I appreciate and thank everyone who's come down here tonight to speak to this. I also live in North Amherst on Montague Road, and I, I fully support this project, this, this zoning article, and this has been a hu, a huge project for the planning board and for the zoning subcommittee. And I see it as a big gain for North Amherst in several ways. The first being, and most important, being that the form-based code overlay on this district gives the town a layer of control that it currently does not have. Currently, commercial uses, you know, you could put up a concrete block building and drive trucks in and out all day long by right, no review. I don't want to see that. I don't want to see any more of that in, in North Amherst. And I also have to say, you know, I went to UMass, my wife went to UMass, we stayed in Amherst, we bought a house in North Amherst, we raised our kids there, we walked up and down to Captain Video, into the library, into the post office, and over to Atroba's Market. And it is a true village center already. I was sorry to see the sawmill shut down, but I'm also excited to see what can be done there. And under the existing commercial zoning, it could be disastrous for the neighborhood and with the types of development that could go in there, which is basically, it's, it's the lowest level of control of any of the zoning districts we have. The commercial district, you know, when I first started hearing about this, rezoning, I said, "Well, what are we doing? We're trying to encourage an economic development in this town, and we're going to change one of the only two or three little commercial zones we have." And then I learned about what you couldn't, couldn't do in those zones. And I have to say that the NAVC use regulations, combined with the form-based code, I think is a huge improvement. And it took me a while to be sold on this, but I really am. And I, I have to say, I'm disappointed that the form-based overlay was pulled back last week, because I think that's one of the best parts of it, is to give some level of design review over what's built and the, the form of buildings. So I, I like, I like the proposal, I support the article as it stands, and with the, obviously with the corrections to the map, but I would urge the, the board and town meeting to support this article. Mr. O'Keefe?
Thank you for those very eloquent comments, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to comment specifically on the issue of the form-based overlay, because we did discuss that, and I agree with your thoughts on the importance of it. The general thinking on that was that, like all of our zoning, this is expected to be a living document that we can revisit in the future if we need to. And so, you know, we heard people who are concerned about it, we understand the fact that people want to see how this plays out in the real world, and so we anticipate seeing some great projects in the area, and hopefully people will have a higher degree of comfort once they see the outcome that is possible under the zoning. And if, at some point in the future, we decide that it's, it's a good idea to extend the form-based overlay district, you know, to something closer to what was proposed last fall, we could certainly revisit that in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Kruger?
I'd just like to make a few comments, because I think with all the time we've spent on this, all of us collectively, I, I just want to kind of say my position and my opinion. And I guess I have a much more optimistic view than some of the, some of the comments we heard tonight. I have a vision of a really vibrant and diverse population and set of uses here, and I think it's really exciting. I see the rezoning as revitalizing and energizing an area that certainly needs some revitalization. So I don't see it as the, the sort of dis, image of destruction, but rather growth in a very positive way. I also think, I've, I've watched a lot of rezoning processes in Amherst over many years, and I really feel that this was genuinely open and thoughtful, and it's been scaled back. It's not the proposal I personally would ideally like, but I think it represents an awful lot of compromise in listening and talking through a number of issues. So I, I hope people who might feel differently than me can feel that they've been heard, because I know I've listened, and I don't always agree, but I really have heard and tried to incorporate a mix of opinions. But I personally feel that this is a really positive step for this part of town. And just a last thing, when people bring up the environmental sensitivity, I guess I have a lot of faith in the regulations and laws that are already on the books to protect these areas. And yes, we could always protect to the nth degree, and then we could never take a bold step or even a visionary step to do something that incorporates a lot of parcels altogether. Wetlands are very protected, both in this town and in the state and so forth, along with all the other environmental regulations. So I don't have the fear that we're treading on environmentally sensitive areas when we rezone. Rezoning is kind of a broader vision, and those protections still come into play on every single parcel when it goes through a development scenario. So for me, I feel quite content that we've protected what needs to be protected. So... So...
Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Did you want to continue when the ringing stops?
I just wanted to sort of go on record as supporting this for the vision and the constructive way it's taken a look at North Amherst. No, I'm finished.
Thank you very much. You know, I have to say that as a student and the folks I know who live in town who are students, they don't just patronize pizza parlors and liquor stores. The students that I know, and I know that there's a sizable minority that are badly behaved, but UMass students in general are, they're studious, and they patronize the same businesses that all the other adults in town use. The supermarkets, the stores in the center of town, the convenience stores, all of it. And I don't see a certain amount of expansion in student housing as being a bad thing. This town relies on students for its livelihood. If you take the students away from this town, what do you have left?
Certainly, I make a comment.
I just have one more thing to say. I also don't, I don't find Amherst, North Amherst, to be a dumping ground either, except in the sense that... It's just, you know, I feel much more positive about the neighborhood and the prospects with this zoning than I do without it. Yes, ma'am? Do you have a comment?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Please come forward to the microphone.
My name is Maureen Adams, and I'm in Precinct 10. I would like you to know that I object being lectured to about our students. I have spent my life in education. I've taught at the university and at other colleges for at least more than 40 years. I've worked in the residence hall systems. I've worked in the classroom. I work in central administrative agencies, working on the education of our students. I love our students. I live here because I enjoy living with students. But I object to the rationalizing of either/or of students. You know, you either, you know, what would this town be without students? This town is its own town. The students have their life. We are trying to figure out ways to accommodate ever-increasing numbers of students when the town is a very small town. And we know that the difficulty is with students who are out of control, a small minority, but a small minority who make our everyday lives extremely objectionable, and especially our nights more than our days. I've asked this group to please do a better job with the town in inspecting student rentals, in looking at the numbers of students who are looking in particular, who are living in particular places, enforcing codes. Please do not lecture us on valuing our students. I love our students. But we must think about the proportions of citizens and students, and we must think of better ways of regulating usage.
Your point is well taken. Thank you.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Rosnoy.
I'd like to go on the record as thanking, first of all, the zoning Subcommittee for all the fantastic work you've been doing. It's been almost a year, maybe over a year now, on this project, and I think I know that because I used to be on that Subcommittee. And I certainly can appreciate all that you've done. So, I think all of us here on the Board owe a great debt to you, and also to my colleague, Ms. Kruger, who, I don't know if it's generally known to the public, has had a lot of very detailed input to the zoning Subcommittee as to a lot of the very boring and technical language of this document, which has been improved thereby. I think a lot of people in town who've been a part of this process know that I have been opposed to the prior project when it came up before the prior Town Meeting. And I just want to go on the record as letting the public know that I support this project. I have had some concerns about the transportation elements of it. I think it could still be stronger. I think the Board and the zoning Subcommittee have heard my concerns. I wish it were still stronger, but as many people here have commented, it has been a compromise in many different ways, and I think it will work to the great benefit of the area of North Amherst in many of the ways that our Chairman has so eloquently described. And I appreciate the fact that most of us here have been able to hear all viewpoints from all sides with an open mind.
Thank you, Mr. Rosnoy. Yes, ma'am?
I'd just like to clarify where we stand on students. Also, as a former college teacher, did it because I love to teach and I love to see students learn, and I love my students. What we're concerned about is this: the number of incidents, the size of the crowds, the intensity of what happens, including violence, the timing. Daylight bottle-throwing on the corners is not acceptable. Students who bash in each other's faces and then send revenge parties the next evening is not acceptable, and I will not apologize for us not wanting that unsolved to come to our neighborhood. There's no reason why I should. I invest in my neighborhood. I invest a lot of time. I invest a lot of effort. We're trying to build a community here. And I'm begging the town, there are things that zoning cannot address, but greatly increasing the density before a serious problem has been addressed is not something we should be asked to take on.
Your point is well taken. Thank you very much.
I move to close the public hearing.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? Motion passes. That doesn't mean the public has to leave. We're going to deliberate on this, and I really do want to thank everyone for coming in, and we value your comments, and we do take them into account. Is there anyone on the Board who has more to say on this or would like to make their Mr. Schreiber has joined us. For the benefit of anyone at home who's just joining us, and for Mr. Schreiber's benefit, we have been, we are currently in a public hearing with respect to the application of Form-Based zoning to the North Amherst Village Center and the rezoning of it.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we've just closed the public hearing.
We just closed the public hearing. And we are now in the deliberation phase. Thank you for the correction.
Well, I'm curious whether Mr. Schreiber can vote. It's not my point to ask, but I'm nosy.
I am not sure that he can, because we closed the public hearing right before you walked in. Mr. Tucker?
I think it would be possible for Mr. Schreiber to contribute to the deliberation, having been aware of the work that was done prior to this. I think he should, I would recommend that he abstain when it comes time to vote a recommendation to Town Meeting, simply because he wasn't here to hear what occurred and the evidence in the hearing.
Mr. Schreiber?
I'm good.
Yes, Mr. Crowner?
So, the, you know, I've sat in a lot of hearings, zoning Subcommittee and Planning Board, and, you know, almost everyone who speaks makes excellent points, and I, you know, agree with just about everyone. And so, when I vote, as I will, in favor of this, it's, I hope that no one takes it as a indication that I'm dismissing anyone's concerns. That's not the case at all. I wish that I could incorporate everyone's concerns, to the extent that they want them incorporated, but that's just not possible. We, you know, we have to make a balance somehow. And so, that's what we've done. What we have before us is an attempt to address the general aspirations and the general concerns of the entire town. And unfortunately, it will impact some people more, but that doesn't mean that we think less of those people, or that we're punishing them, or that we don't care what they think. But we can't have it, we can't have everything that we want. And so, I, you know, I'm really torn about both of these village centers. The concerns that have been raised are really apt, I think, and I wish that I could fix them all, but I don't think that we can.
Thank you, Mr. Crowner. Mr. Tucker?
I would like to go on record as being in favor of fixing everything, but doing it in a way and at the time that you can with the tools that are appropriate to do all those fixes. We have one tool that's under discussion here, and it has a range of things it can do. And to the extent that it is attempting to do them, it's trying to be as comprehensive as possible, given the limitations of the tool. There are other tools we will be using and are using to address many of the concerns that were raised this evening. They're all utterly legitimate concerns. I almost spoke at the time to reaffirm, in particular, what Ms. Keller said, that one of the things that people, several things are true at once. Amherst would not be what it is if it did not have the educational institutions and all of what that means. But Amherst is also unique, not only in New England, but I think possibly in the Northeast and other places in terms of the relative size of the institutions and the populations that they bring to bear in the community, as opposed to the size of the community itself, although you can't pull those two apart. The nearest comparable community is Mansfield, Connecticut, which has stores, Yukon campus. In some ways, their community is even smaller relative to the institution that they house. But Amherst is, I think, is the biggest state university campus in New England, and it has one of the smaller communities that attempts to support and live with that set of institutions, all three of them. And it is not an easy thing. We have, we received applications from Amherst College with regard to four of their properties in the last week. Three of them, they're taking single-family residences that they owned and are converting them to duplexes. And the fourth, they are converting to a quadruplex so that they can house their new faculty, because when the faculty comes into Amherst and seeks housing, they can't compete with landlords trying to buy single-family residences. So, it's not in any sense that any of the concerns that have been raised are not real. They are utterly real. The community, the town staff, the town manager, we are all dedicated to doing something about this. We are going to have to do it in a stepwise fashion, because it is a big problem. But we cannot wait, in many ways, to do the kinds of other changes that we need in order to counterbalance that, in order to provide opportunities for other different things to happen. It is a perfectly legitimate fear to say, "Well, if you make that possible, then all we're going to get is more of the same horrible thing." We will make every effort to make that not true, but we can't promise anything. All we can do is try and make the community better. We've incorporated in the proposed changes as many limitations on that as this tool can accommodate, and stay within the range of what it can legitimately do. So, don't give up on fixing everything, okay?
Mr. O'Keefe?
Yeah, just following up on some of Mr. Crowner's points. I understand the sort of reluctant embrace of it that you described, and I certainly share the concerns that you expressed. I mean, Ms. Keller and many other people have raised concerns about student behavior, and I think it goes without saying, maybe it doesn't go without saying, but it's worth saying, that all of us share those concerns. I mean, none of us want to encourage that kind of behavior in Amherst or anywhere. So, to whatever degree that we're talking about students, and remember, we're not just talking about students, but to whatever degree students are involved, none of us want to see that. And I think that we've done a lot in this proposal to try to discourage that. We have specific provisions, like requiring a mix of bedroom types. We have provisions that say that you can't have a monoculture of apartments or townhouses to the exclusion of everything else. And in particular, the Form-Based regulations themselves, I think, work very strongly against what Mr. Greenbaum earlier alluded to in saying that North Amherst is a dumping ground for cheap housing, and, which might be true to some extent, but I think that the regulations that are being proposed here very much work against that. The Form-Based regulations promote and require a standard of housing that is far superior to the type of thing that, a dumping ground type of multi-unit housing. So, I just don't see that possible under the regulations that are being proposed here. Mr. Tucker just said, "We will try our best and do everything we can to try to discourage those forms of behavior," and that's true, and we have more tools than ever to do that. But beyond that, I think that the regulations themselves serve as a deterrent and a discourager for those, the types of housing arrangements that encourage that form of behavior. So, I don't find any of that negative about this. I think those are positive aspects of this, and I don't see it at all as a burden on the neighborhoods or the area. I see this as something that is going to revitalize and make stronger and make a better neighborhood, and not something that is a burden that needs to be borne anywhere by anyone. And so, I would encourage people to think about it that way, rather than as something that, you know, has these negative consequences that we're going to reluctantly tolerate.
Mr. Rosnoy?
I move, Planning Board, recommend this proposal. What is it? Article 25, I believe?
Yes.
To Town Meeting for approval, with the provision that the individual map needs to be changed to reflect the corrections as noted in the public hearing.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We'll take a three-minute break.
I'd die to know what's in there.
For the bride.
At the report.
For the bride.
An anniversary or something?
No, no, no.
I saw, thank you.
Nice to have something to share.
I sent this email.
Very nice of you.
It'd be easier to do, actually, when I was...
Jonathan David about...
You know, just getting rid of these two par threes, I think it's great. How about moving the T-box for number one? And then doing something like, doing the T, the T here for number eight. But then number nine would be something like, put the G in there for number one.
That's excellent. I can't wait to get to it, but we got to finish up this meeting.
Okay.
Town meeting, we have the parking regulations, and we have the two rezonings that we've just been discussing. One of the things that we need to decide before we get into a warrant review per se is who is going to move and speak these motions. And I have received a suggestion from Mr. Tucker that we try to involve as many people from the board as possible in presenting these articles to town meeting. That was something that, you know, if we can each speak to a piece of it that we're familiar with, that could improve the, you know, the town meeting members' understanding of what this does. I've misplaced that list that he gave me.
Here it is.
Right here.
No, I have that. No, I got it right here. Thank you, Chris. I'll just, I'll, I'll read from Mr. Tucker's suggestions. "In assigning movers and speakers," says Mr. Tucker, "I wonder if it would be a good idea to have David present as chair, leaving the zoning subcommittee members and others available to respond to specific questions about the articles. As was discussed in earlier meetings, I think it would be helpful to ask members of the board to take responsibility for addressing different aspects of the articles which come up during town meeting discussion. A potential distribution, they should be asked, Rob Crowner, "The sustainability aspects of village center rezoning under the master plan and sustainable design requirements, section 16.87." Bruce Carson, "The history and extent of the public participation process." Connie Kruger, "Already asked staff to bring her up to speed on Atkins Corners so she could respond to questions and concerns about that rezoning." Sandra Anderson, "Parking regulations." Steve Schreiber and Kathleen Ford, "Fundamental and specific design aspects of the form-based design." And Richard Rosnoy, "Street types and transportation issues." Apparently, Mr. O'Keefe, you've been left out.
And I am so disappointed by that.
Any thoughts on Mr. Tucker's proposal? Ms. Kruger?
I did tell Mr. Tucker I was interested in addressing some of the concerns for Atkins Corner, but I wasn't necessarily suggesting I shoulder the whole village center. I'd be happy to take parts of that and maybe have someone else also speak to Atkins Corner.
Mr. Rosnoy?
I concur that it would be good to get more, or quite a few, or a few of us involved, but this particular layout seems a bit diffuse to me.
Well, I use it as a starting point.
It seems like more categories, for one thing, than we would want to hit town meeting members with.
Yes, Ms. Kruger?
Maybe we could sort of just go around and say what we felt sort of resonated, or what, what we would like, you know, called upon to speak to, or what we felt may be more comfortable, what aspect we're more comfortable with, and see maybe it align or not with Mr. Tucker's starting point.
Let's start with Mr. O'Keefe.
So, I guess not responding to that specifically, but just one thing that's worth thinking about is to what degree this is a presentation versus people being prepared and interested in responding to questions that fall into a certain area. And so I, I think the idea of spreading the work, or the areas of responsibility around the board is a fantastic one. But I, I don't think it would be a great idea for us to sort of all parade up there in sequence as part of a big, long presentation of the article.
I agree.
So I, I think that the idea of having our chair present the, the core of the article as, as much as it can be boiled down and still made comprehensible is good. And then have people standing by, ready to respond to specific follow-up questions in, in areas that match their level of expertise or interest.
I would be willing to do that. I, I definitely would need to defer on some of the more detailed aspects of the plan to people who have been, were involved with the specific language. Because I, as good as I am with memorizing heavy stacks of text, I don't think I'll have the whole thing learned to the extent the zoning subcommittee does.
Sure.
Yes, sport.
So, you know, not having been present for the presentation last year, were there, was there a diverse and a comprehensive? I, I get the sense that we're not, you know, what's going to come up at town meeting is not going to be a whole lot different than what came up tonight. We're going to get the fear about density and student housing. And so it seems to me that there needs to be a fairly concise and comprehensive, somebody being, being prepared to speak to that.
Well, in answer to your first question, last year, Mr. Crowner pretty much shouldered the whole load. With a few exceptions.
And well, I might say.
And he did it very well. But I agree with you that the, that if we can have people prepared to address particular points, specifically that one, the Applewood question, presumably, Mr. O'Connor will raise that procedural question again. If we can have people prepared on each potential issue, then I think our case will be much more convincing that we've thought this through. Mr. Rosnoy?
A question, are you now a member of town meeting?
No, I'm not. In fact, I'd be interested to know who is. Raise your hand if you are elected, and congratulations. Three, one, two, three.
Don't those people have to be the, oh, no, they need to be the movers?
Yes.
They have to be the movers.
And if I may, so, as I always do, I'll, I'll recommend that we focus our discussion on who's speaking to the article and responding to questions and stuff. The question of who moves it is ultimately a technical one. And so if that ends up being the person who's speaking to it primarily, if that person is a town meeting member, then it's always going to be that person. And if not, then one of us has to make the motion.
Ms. Brestrop?
I just wanted to clarify that staff has been asked to provide a list of movers and speakers to the select board's office by, I think it's April 13th. So this is your opportunity for, you know, nailing down who's going to move and speak. Specifically, who's going to move and then explain the article, rather than answering questions later.
Well, I'm willing to introduce both of the Atkins Corner and North Amherst articles, if the board wants me to do that.
I want you to.
Okay. And so what I would like to do in that sense is just, we can, we can put me down as speaker. The moderator will recognize any member of the planning board who raises their hand to get up there and speak. And, and that applies, I think, both to just getting up on general principles and to addressing questions that may be raised from the audience.
Yes and no. When there's a question that is sort of floating in the air with an expectation of having an answer, then he will, my experience has been that he will always recognize a member of the board or anyone else who's prepared to answer it. He will, but if there's not a question floating in the air and he's just looking for the next speaker, board members are welcome to raise their hand, but you cannot count on a guarantee of being preferentially called upon. Then he'll be looking to the audience also in that circumstance.
We say town meeting members. I shouldn't have said audiences, although there is some audience on TV and otherwise. So I'm going to write in myself as speaker for these first two. We'll get to the details in a minute. Would anyone like to speak to the parking article? And we don't need to put any pressure on anyone in particular.
Well, it's a, it's a zoning issue. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, you know, articulate it, but it is, I mean, it comes out of zoning and it's, it's, you know, it's got a number of layers. You know, I'm happy to be another person to stand up and speak in favor of it. But I think, as I was looking at the summary here, where did I just see it? Article 26, you know, whether this is read in summary, I think this is a, this is a, is this the entire article or is this just a summary? No, this is, this is a summary right here.
That's a summary.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's all the people can handle. I mean, I'm happy to read this, stand up and read it as a, you know, I can save parking. But I would love to have zoning people as, you know, as the backfield, infield on, on any specific questions, like, you know, and I can go through this and, and get a little bit better handle on it about the grandfathering, and it only is going to be triggered when three conditions are in effect and that sort of thing. But, I don't know, I'm, I'm, and, well, before I say anything about being a mover speaker, I would like to know, I'm getting myself in a hole here. The dates of town meeting go on for three months. Did anybody notice that? April, May, and June?
Yes.
Okay, only, only in Amherst, and I'm actually away a couple of those days. So is anybody have any estimate of when Articles 24, 25, and 26 might be brought up?
May 16th.
May 16th?
Fourth night?
Okay.
That's a good estimate.
Okay.
It would, it would be plus or minus one night, I would say, at the most from that.
What are those, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays?
Mondays and Wednesdays.
Mondays and Wednesdays. 14 and 16, I see. Okay, so somewhere in there.
Somewhere in those two weeks. And it's going to be the third of them to come up.
As long as somebody has my back, I'm happy, I'm happy to do it. I can't move it, I'm not a town meeting member. And parking is, you know, is always a hot topic. You don't think it is, but sometimes it is. It is, it's not sometimes, it's always. So, but as I would look to the zoning folks to, to answer more, you know, any questions that aren't sort of on the summary. Okay.
It sounds like a yes.
It is. Embrace it.
Oh, embrace it.
I would, as a former town meeting member, I would recommend strongly against reading a, a paper that has been put in a packet or out of the back table. People don't like that.
Okay.
They want, they want your own words. I mean, you can paraphrase that or rearrange or something, but to read it is, would be very bad for them.
Okay.
And, and secondly, I, I would suggest, before we conclude, that David should move or speak to both articles. I think it might be good to have two different people speak to two different, to the two different village center ones. It spreads out the work a little bit, and, and it provides variety. And, and I, I guess there is a sense of, of showing teamwork when the, when the chair makes, makes the presentation. But, but to have more people making presentation also shows teamwork. I mean, there's, I guess, it could go either way.
Are you volunteering?
If necessary, sure. Or, or could you do the parking one, too? It doesn't matter.
I agree with you. And certainly, it would be easier for me to prepare for one than for both, so I'd be happy to share the wealth as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Mr. Rosnoy?
I, I think there's some value to the chair making the presentation. No offense, Rob.
Yeah, I can see that.
I noticed that when, when it happens in, for example, finance board or, or one of the school board presentations, that it seems to focus things a bit.
Mr. O'Keefe?
So I, I know from my own experience, having been immersed in the minutia of this, and that probably represents my colleagues on the subcommittee, too, that, that we tend to know the details very well, but at least I do less of a good job of explaining the big picture. And so Mr. Weber's statement tonight in support of the article would be an excellent backbone to structure a presentation around in, in much the same way. And I thought you did an excellent job with that. And having that, bringing that kind of a big-picture approach to the, the initial presentation and summary of the article, I think, is, is really the best possible thing we can do. I guess I would support that also.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Crowner, did I hear you say the word parking, that you would be happy to do the parking?
I didn't say, I didn't say happy.
Oh.
I said I'd be willing to, sure.
Well, I, I don't know, not being on the, I mean, not being on the zoning subcommittee, I, I kind of feel, I mean, not that I don't have ownership because I'm on the planning board, but I, I think that someone from the subcommittee could, would. board, but I, I think that someone from the Subcommittee could, would be a better speaker than I would be on this particular article, although I would be, stand ready to augment any, any negative comments should they come up, or, or really good questions should they come up. Because I'm still personally of the feeling of it's, isn't grandfathered, it only will be triggered when, you know, legal uses, change of use, that sort of thing happens. So, you know, I'm in favor of it. But as Mr. Tucker always likes to say, we have many tools and this is just one. So, I would, I would defer to you and even ask you if you would consider. How's that?
Ms. Kruger?
I mean, you guys can work it out. But I, I would just encourage Ms. Anderson to present. And I would also say that the staff often helps with some scripting and some preparation, because I think it would be your first presentation on a zoning article. And I, I just think you bring a lot of credibility to the way you present. And I wouldn't be, I think people would have your back. And I think you could also get some help with the visuals and some scripting. So, I would just, I mean, I know it's a lot of, but I think you'd be great at it, actually. And I want to encourage you.
I agree.
I'll move nominations be closed.
You have to get your C likes. I was just, if I could continue.
Yes, please.
Just, I think density, student housing is definitely one thing we've heard that has to be addressed. A couple of other things that I thought of, maybe other people, you know, why, why now? Why this timing? A number of people, Mr. O'Connor and others, have said, "It's not the right time for Atkins Corner. It's not the right time for North Amherst infrastructure, other protections. We haven't tried out the roundabouts." And so I think, whoever it is, to address the sort of, why do we think this is ready now, given that we don't know every single thing that we could possibly know, or have every single other thing in place, because we never can. So I think maybe the timing issue is one thing that's come up a lot. I think the environmental concerns for North Amherst, and for South Amherst as well, because the Epstein's have articulated that. Environmental, for them, the sound pollution was something I, that was what I had talked to Mr. Tucker about. He said there was a lot of information, but we weren't able to get that out at town meeting as a sort of response back to a heartfelt concern. Those are ones I noticed, but I have a feeling my colleagues have other ones that have been themes.
I think probably scope of zoning is going to come up in terms of what we can and can't regulate through zoning. Mr. Tucker has been addressing that in our meetings over and over. But we're going to need somebody who can really articulate what the scope of zoning can be, and why it can't, why we can't control the age of people who live in housing. Any others that we're missing here? Major issues? Mr. Carson?
I think going along with what Connie was saying, I think there's a misconception that somehow the new zoning for North Amherst especially is going to greatly increase the density of the housing. And as I understand it, from what the consultants proposed, it would not be any greater density than what would be allowed right now.
Is there anyone on the board who feels that they could undertake a calculation of how much housing could go into that area? Anyone with, say, an architecture background?
We're allowed to ask a question, or?
Not right now, thank you.
I mean, you know, I wouldn't want to do it alone. It's.
Together?
Yeah, yeah. Problem is, it's not science. So, there's a lot of variables that I could, I would be reluctant to.
Mr. O'Keefe?
The, I do know that the Cecil Group did some work along those lines as part of the preparation and the work that they did for us last year. And so, it might be possible to give you guys some visibility into that. And maybe that would give you something more to go on. I mean, I, I understand that the fundamental issue is that, like, anybody can propose anything. So, I mean, you're not being asked to propose a specific project here. You're being asked to imagine what sort of thing might be proposed. And that's a, it's kind of a real thought exercise. Sure.
So, I would just be very careful.
Yep. Right. So, I do know that some analysis has already gone on. So, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All right. Let's see what we can do on that. Anything else? Okay. Let's keep moving here.
So, excuse me, do we have a sense of who the movers and speakers are?
We have.
Given the fact that I need to turn this in on the 13th, and you're not meeting again until the.
Some, anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm speaking to 24 and 25. Sandra's speaking to 26. And we need people to move them. Town meeting members.
I'm happy to move any, you know, all, but whichever one is convenient for, like, I would move South Amherst. Because I think I voted against parking.
Yeah, you can't, you can't move that one.
I was against it before I was for it.
I could quote some presidential candidates, but I won't. Who wants to move 25, the North Amherst?
Happy to do that.
Mr. Schreiber?
I abstain.
What's that?
I said I abstain, so.
You can move it. And parking.
Those are other town meetings. Is it Jonathan?
Yeah. I'm, I'm the other one. I was just going to comment that it's remarkably satisfying to witness the board sort of like fighting over the opportunity to speak to Articles on the floor of town meeting and to move them. I say that, having been in those shoes probably 75% of the time since I've been on the board. But I, I say that mostly because if somebody else, one of you two, you're the only other, Steve and Connie are the only other town meeting members?
No, no.
If one of you wanted to, if one of you wanted to move the parking article also, and have a town meeting that was free of me directly moving and speaking to Articles, I think actually that would be a healthy symbol of the board, yeah.
Fresh, fresh look.
No, I want to split the, split the fun.
That's fine with me, too.
Jonathan will do the, moving on the parking. Okay.
Am I moving or am I parking?
Moving.
This is by far the broadest array of people participating in this.
Yes. And.
This will make Mr. Tucker happy?
And so.
I don't know if that's possible, but I'll try.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One final thought on that. I don't think we did or need to solidify the, the list of topics and who's addressing them. But I would suggest maybe we have that as an agenda item on our next meeting, that we all ruminate on that for the next couple of weeks and then talk about it again next time.
And any communications on that, that you want to, if you want to take on any of those issues, please let Chris know, so that we can have some, you know, we can get, be ahead of the game once we start the meeting.
I'm sure we'll be finding a way to take those.
Okay. Is there anything else on the warrant review that we really need to discuss right now? Okay. We have a copy of a letter from the PVPC to the Select Board with respect to the local technical assistance program. You may recall that we requested assistance in, can someone remind me what we asked for assistance with? TDR. PVPC is asking for a, well, let me just read this. PVPC is able to provide local technical assistance at no cost to the community, thanks to funding support provided by the Massachusetts Legislature, under contract with the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development for District Local Technical Assistance Program. DHC D requires a 10% match for all projects undertaken under this contract, including a 5% cash match and a 5% in-kind match. PVPC, PVPC has agreed to provide the required 5% cash match on behalf of its member communities. That's what we got. That's great. While there is no required local cash match, that's very hard to say, requirement from your community, we request that you express its commitment in the following two ways. First, provide an in-kind match equivalent to 5% of the total budget for your project. This in-kind match can include community staff time or volunteer board members' time spent on the project, and should be documented on the form attached. Two, affirm your community's commitment to implement the work that PVPC performs. This can include, for example, agreement to take proposed zoning bylaws ordinances to town meeting or city council for consideration during the contract period. And then, this was addressed to Stephanie O'Keefe, the Chair of the Select Board, asking her to please sign the bottom of the attached commitment letter, which my copy is not signed, but I hope that she will sign it. And then there's a form for people to contribute their time for the in-kind match. Now, as a reminder, what the TDR is, is transfer of development rights. And the deliverables are a transfer of development rights by law, including zoning overlay district map. They're going to undertake up to four meetings with the planning board and staff, consisting in 20 hours, comprehensive zoning review and priority less, 70 hours, one public meeting to present the results, and graphics mapping work. So, the hours being 104, a 5% in-kind match would be approximately six hours of work from the town, as expected. So, something to keep in mind, if any of you know anything about transfer of development rights or are interested in it, I would encourage you to volunteer your time, or to encourage others to do so.
Do we get to count the time that we spend, like, working in meetings?
I think, well, this is nine of us times five minutes it took to go through this. That's an hour right there. Ms. Brestrop?
Oh, I was just going to say that most of that will be staff time, and I'm sure the staff will contribute more than six hours. So, I think we're covered there.
You always do. Thank you for that. I'm just trying to get you some help. Any topics not reasonably anticipated? Mr. Crowner?
So, you expressed the hope that the Chair of the Select Board did sign this letter. I, I would like to know whether she has or not. And if not, I would like to move that, that we request the Select Board and the Town Manager to sign this letter and accept the offer.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion that passes unanimously? Can, shall we do a letter or a form? Would you like me to call them? How shall we do this?
I can pass the information along in an email, and then they would eventually see your minutes. Is that sufficient? Or would you like me to draft a letter for your signature?
I don't think you need to go that far. I think, I'm confident that they'll sign it. I think it's actually only Stephanie. It says chief elected official. Mr. Mussany's not elected, so. Is that right? Okay. Further comments? No. Any, any other old business that we're forgetting? No. How about new business?
No new business.
A and Rs?
Just one. It's easy.
Okay.
This A and R comes about because there is a need to set up a living will. And the people who are going to be the beneficiaries of the, of whatever results from the estate wanted to be able to separate out a piece of land. This is on Jenk Street. Do you know where Jenk Street is? It's off Pillam Road.
Amherst, this book.
So, the two people who are applying here are intending to take possession of a piece of land, a little strip of land, that is currently part of their in-laws' property. And the idea is that they may use it eventually to access land behind their in-laws' property. But they wanted to take it out of the living will.
Is it a trust?
You mean.
Maybe it's a living trust.
Living trust, yeah.
I'm probably not using the right terminology. But anyway, the, the in-laws are intending to set up this trust. And the applicants do not want this little piece of land as part of the trust. They want to obtain that little piece of land so they can use it to access the back property. It's not a building lot. It's just a little strip of land that may eventually become part of a flag lot. So that was kind of a long-winded way of saying that. Would you like to sign this after the meeting, Mr. Weber?
Okay. Unless anyone from the board is objecting to that, seems pretty innocuous. How about upcoming ZBA applications? Just the important ones, then.
Just the important ones. I have to tell you about all of them. Let's see. Someone named Bettandry is intending to convert an existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling at 685 West Street, which would be down south of East Hadley Road. Possibly south of, I'm not exactly sure where 685 West Street is. 500 West Street is the condominiums that are in the Pomeroy Village intersection. So, is that of any interest to you? It's in the RO zoning district, and that's why it's going before the zoning board. Second one is Amherst College. They have an existing single-family dwelling, and they want to create a two-family dwelling at 31 Spring Street, which is one of the white houses along Spring Street. And that's in the BG zoning district. The third one is Amherst College, seeking to create a two-family dwelling out of a single-family dwelling at 249 South Pleasant Street, which is in the RG zoning district. I think there's some nonconformity about that property that caused it to be in the arena of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is that interesting to you as something?
Thank you. Is that all the ZBAs?
That is.
About SPPs, SPRs, and SUBs?
Yes. We have, and this, I need to talk to you about this. We have, I think I mentioned this last time, there's a house up in North Amherst, a single-family house that's going to be converted to a two-family house. And that is 1156 North Pleasant Street. That's coming up before you on April 18th, which is your next meeting. And then, is that right? No. Excuse me.
Yeah, that's right.
That is correct, yes. And then 96 North Hampton Road is an Amherst College property that Amherst College is seeking to convert from a single-family to a two-family dwelling. And that is in your jurisdiction. And so you will be reviewing a special, or site plan review application for that. That's on May 2nd. And we discussed the timing of that. It's a town meeting night, but you agreed to take on that project because it's a, I think it's going to be relatively straightforward, which is always the kiss of death to say that. But I'm pretty sure this one's going to be straightforward. But then you also have 67 North Hampton Road, site plan review and a special permit application, again by Amherst College. And Amherst College is very eager to get going on these projects because they would like to be able to house faculty at the start of the school year. So, they had actually asked to have 67 North Hampton Road on the May 5th schedule. I've recently scheduled it for May 16th, but I just realized this evening that you think that the town meeting will actually be continuing on, on May 16th. And so I'm not entirely. comfortable with that scheduling anymore.
Can it be at the, the May 2nd with the other?
No, because that's a town meeting night as well. And you only have, I think you agreed to meet at 6:00, and so you would have between 6:00 and 7:15 really to review a project. So, you could open the public hearing for 67 North Hampton Road on May 16th, and then continue it to the next meeting, which would be June, well, it could be May 30th if you wanted to meet three times in May, or it could be June 6th, which would be the first meeting in June. So, I guess I'm, I would like to accommodate Amherst College's desire to have this, you know, moved ahead quickly. On the other hand, I understand, you know, that you have limitations as far as what you can do on town meeting nights. So, I'm looking to you to give me some input on whether you think you could open that meeting on May 16th and see how far you can get with it. It's, it's a site plan review, but it's also a special permit because they want to modify the front setback requirement where they butt Lincoln Ave. So, it's going to be two applications. It'll be a joint public hearing. May I ask Mr. O'Keefe, do you really believe that town meeting is going to be going on for April 30th, May 2nd, May 7th, May 9th, May 14th, and May 16th as well?
I would say there's about a 50/50 chance that it would get to six nights.
Mm-hmm.
Just a guess, though.
Well, we could put them on for that date and then just reschedule them if we have to. And just let them know that we'll do our best, but we may not be able to do it.
Okay.
What about that?
What about the advertising requirements? Does that?
We'll just advertise it again.
We'd need to advertise it by April 27th. That's when we have to send them in the legal ad. So, you could talk about this again at your next meeting.
Let's do that.
Okay. All right.
Maybe we can try and keep their expectations low. We are hearing that one before town meeting on the 2nd, so we're doing what we can. Mr. Rosnoy?
Considering the time, are there any of the reports that we can?
Well, that was going to be, I, as, I'm going to exercise my chair-ness here to skip the, all the reports and adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look at us, we're going to, you know, this is why the town needs a tree ward up, because they need to grow trees.